Good evening, welcome to the Oceanside Unified School District Board of Education Meeting for March 9th, 2021. We are starting at 6:04 PM. Thanks for your patience. We're going to start the meeting with call to order and roll call. I'm going to go around, just say present if you're here. I'll start with Vice President Eric Joyce.
Here.
Raquel Alvarez.
Present.
Eleanor Evans.
Present.
And Mike Blessing.
Present.
Thank you. We are moving to item 2B, Public Report of Action Taken in Closed Session. There is no report out of closed session at this time. We don't have anything to report. And item 2C, my favorite, Student Representatives. So we're going to start with Adiana Montalvo from Oceanside High School.
I think I'm so sorry.
There you go. Welcome.
My things went all weird. Okay. This is the best it's gonna get. Okay. Let me go to my. Hi, I'm Adiana. So good evening. Thank you to the school board and the community members. I am excited to share what's happening at our school right now. So you guys didn't hear me all right, right? Am I good? Yeah, okay, cool. Sports are starting back. Our cross-country team has hosted two meets already. Our first home football game will be this March 26th, but our first game is against Mission Hills on the 19th. Soccer tryouts for boys and girls began last week and we'll go through the rest of this week. We've run off from sports. Some Proud Pirate stuff. Ninth grader Aiden Cruz, 10th grader Leslie Ojeda, 11th grader Juliana Bala, and 12th grader Eric Russell received the Proud Pirate Student Recognition Award for achievement this February. Students are nominated by teachers for this award and the winners are determined by student votes. Every month there is a winner in each grade level. The winners receive prizes like Elimination Edition Hot and Cold Thermos, T-shirt, and a certificate signed by the class president of their grade. OHHS ASB is working with the Oceanside Historical Society and local downtown businesses to develop a treasure hunt, which the word egg is in treasure, the word play. During the spring break, students can participate virtually or in person due to COVID, you know, physically distance, of course, at their own pace. Currently, the Historical Society is helping us create questions that will give participants access to the history of downtown Oceanside and Oceanside High School. We're really excited to host this. And then from there, representatives from OHHS met with Dr. Lawrence and students from El Camino to plan a co-hosted event that will help students know that we're all in this together. We are excited about our next planning opportunity. And that is what we have going on. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Appreciate it. All right, next up, I see his face on the screen, is Isaiah Segular from El Camino High School.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to Board President Dr. Biggin and the rest of the board members, as well as to Superintendent Dr. Vidalie and her executive staff, and all who are present this evening for giving me the time to speak. My name is Isaiah Segular, and I am the ASB President and Student Representative from El Camino High School. So in the field of sports, we're happy to say that sports have, sports including football, girls volleyball, basketball, soccer, cross-country and swim, water polo, and golf have finally been able to start once again, and having practices safely under COVID guidelines. As well as El Camino Wildcat Cross Country Team started off their 2021 season with a victory against Canyon Crest Academy on Saturday, February 27th, and we are very proud of them. We also hit over 1,000 subscribers on our school's athletic YouTube channel where we livestream our sports games so families and students can watch safely from the comfort of their home. Regarding student recognition, El Camino Golden Pride has been recognizing its seniors in band and color guard on its Instagram account dedicating an individual post to each senior. El Camino Cheer has also started recognizing its senior squad on the USD team, recognizing them and dedicating an individual post to each senior and showing what major the senior has decided to pick. And finally, concerning organizations, El Camino Interacts Club continues to have beach and park cleanups and making our city the beauty it is. El Camino Cheer has gone to participate in McCullough's Valentine's Day drive-through event for their students, and they have also gone to Del Rio and Nichols Academic Achievement Drive-Thru Events. ASB finished their Valentine theme spirit week, which went extremely well and got a good amount of participation. And currently, ASB is in the middle of another virtual event. Right now, we are doing a Remembrance Week in honor of our one-year mark since lockdown, which will be Saturday, March 13th. Throughout this Remembrance Week, we have a different activity for each day. Yesterday, which was Monday, was Post Your Mask Monday, where students sent in and posted photos of them wearing their favorite mask. Today, Tuesday, is Trying New Things Tuesday, where students sent in or posted a photo of them trying something new or a hobby that they picked up during quarantine, such as baking, cooking, dancing, and painting, et cetera. Tomorrow, Wednesday, will be Way Back One Wednesday, which means students will be able to share their favorite photos from when we were still at school. Thursday will be True Hero Thursday, where students will post a photo of someone they looked up to or someone that's helped them throughout quarantine, such as a parent, sibling, essential worker, fireman, policeman, et cetera. And Friday will be New Fashion Friday, where students can post or send in a then-and-now photo showing how much or how little their sense of style has changed. Saturday will be our one-year mark since lockdown, and since we wanted to do something special, we planned a virtual pep rally. This virtual pep rally is to lift the spirits of our students and to entertain them as well. It will include messages from our wonderful Principal Fraser, as well as performances from our amazing cheer squad, our elite dance team ECDC, POM, and our amazing student choir. Thank you for your time, and this concludes my presentation. Good evening.
Thank you, Isaiah. Appreciate it. And do we have Diego Reyes from Surfside Educational Academy?
Yes, hello. I'm trying to get the camera working. Can you guys see me?
Not yet.
Not yet.
We hear you. If all else.
It says it's working.
Go ahead and just make the presentation.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll listen to you.
Yeah, so you can hear about our great school. So, good evening Superintendent Dr. Vitali, School Board President, Board Members and guests. My name is Diego Reyes. I am student representative for Surfside Educational Academy for this evening. Congratulations to Karen Alexa Acevedo, who recently graduated from the Independent Study Program at Surfside Educational Academy. We wish her well in the future goals and endeavors. Well done, Karen. We have two after-school programs that meet every Friday from 1:00 PM to 2:00 PM at Surfside. The two programs are Comic Arts and GSA. The two groups have shared in activities of decorating and flying kites and participating in a game of tenzi, which allows for fun and social distancing at the same time. This week, the groups will be involved in a watercolor project. Students have access to the weekly scheduled activities through their advisory Google Classroom. Surfside High School is one week away from the end of its third quarter. Students are working hard towards completing their classes as they come into the last quarter of the school year. Surfside High School is, uh... We wish the students well as they work towards the goal of graduation from Surfside, and that's it.
Thanks, Diego.
Thank you.
All right, that's the favorite part. Good night. So, item 2D, Approval of the Agenda. I call for a motion to accept the agenda as presented with the exception of item 7B, which is pulled from tonight's agenda to allow additional time for discussions. I call for a second.
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. The next item is a Superintendent's Report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Vitale.
Thank you, President Biggin, and I just want to thank the students. This is the highlight of every meeting, and you're sharing a lot of really good news. And it's exciting to see the return to in-person activity, and a couple of our students shared those athletics that are coming back and also some of the clubs. So that's very exciting to hear, and we look forward to more of that. Isaiah, I would be very afraid to post a sense of style picture for quarantine, so I'm going to just not be a part of that because I would embarrass myself. I am certain of that. But I would love to see the pictures that kids post, so I think that's great. So I do have a couple of things to report tonight, but I want to start with a video, and I had the great opportunity to go to Nichols Elementary and help acknowledge the students that were nominated by their teachers as doing extremely well during these very difficult times. And it was like a little ice cream social, but it was a drive-through. So we were able to hand kids different kinds of ice cream, and I love ice creams, so it was very hard to give not much ice cream away, but the kids were so very happy and excited when they came through with their families. And I had the opportunity to meet this student, and Principal Rob Flaherty shared a video that she made, and this is Miley Aberin, and I'd like you to watch this video, and then I'm going to read just a little blurb about Miley and her success. So, Mr. Moon, take it away. I trust our technology is going to work.
Good morning, navigators. This is Smiley, and this is my little brother Elijah, and welcome back to another morning message. Have you thought how a blind person reads? She reads Braille books, blank books that have tiny bumps on them. These bumps are a special code for letters and words. A blind person moves their fingers across the page. That's how she reads. Braille was invented by a blind man named Louis Braille. Louis lived in a world that was always dark, but he didn't let this darkness his attitude. He kept a positive attitude, worked hard, and became a teacher and great inventor. So next time, if you are upset and having a problem at school, talk to your teacher or parents. Then remember Louis Braille, so you can get through your problems and succeed just like he did. Remember, navigators, everyone is a leader, everyone has a genius, and change starts with you!
Beautiful, and you just have to smile when you see that. So please indulge me when I read the statement that Principal Flaherty wrote about Miley. Miley Aberin has been at Nichols since TK and is currently in 4th grade. Miley had some challenges when she started with us. She struggled with the structure of school and with social skills. She learned academics quickly but needed instruction and support in all areas to develop the whole child. As evidenced by her videos, Miley has embraced our School Leader in Me program. She has developed social skills and leadership abilities, I believe, through our focus on these skills through Leader in Me. When we began morning messages this year, it was a perfect opportunity to tie it into things we do with Leader in Me. All students have the opportunity to sign up and create morning messages. Miley has volunteered several times and has used it as an opportunity to study the contents of the message, practice and implement presentation skills, and build her abilities with technology. She began with a script and saw models of how one could look for messages, Laura, that's the Assistant Principal, and I created. Student messages can be as simple as a recording of them reading from the script to what Miley created. She took things to an impressive level because of her drive, school encouragement and support, and her parents' guidance and help. Moving forward, we see her leadership and her genius, and will build on those things. As we continue into an in-person school model, I hope to have her involved in our student leadership team and teach others, students and staff, how to create these amazing videos. Miley, thank you so much for that inspiration. And the first question I asked Principal Flaherty was, how did she do that? And she did. Did she do that all at home? And in fact, she did, through the skill set that she's learned. So Miley, very impressive, and thank you for bringing a smile to all of our faces. And the last thing I would like to just share is that the vaccine is now available for all of our employees. 100% of OUSD employees are eligible for the vaccine, and through the Voluntary Employees Benefits Association, we know that is VIVA, 20,000 educators have been vaccinated in the first week. I had the opportunity to go for my first shot yesterday, and it was incredibly organized, and it was actually fun, if it can be. It was fun, it was easy, and I'm very, very proud to announce and excited to announce that all of our employees have been notified that they're available to get the vaccine, and they can make those appointments and make that a priority. So we're very excited to announce that. So I know that was a little longer than usual, so I thank you for letting me indulge.
Thank you, Dr. Vitali. We're going to move on to item 4A, Board Reports. Is there, I'm looking at, we'll start with Vice President Eric Joyce.
Good evening, everyone. Just a few things to report. I went to several Black History Month events last month, including the North San Diego County NAACP Youth Council event, which was amazing to see some of our young people in our local area, really, really getting deep into the history. And I learned, I learned a lot of things from their informational meeting, and it was really inspiring. I also got to meet with several state legislators, and we advocated for increasingly clear guidance so that we can do our job as a board and education leaders locally better. Vaccine access, which they have acquiesced, and for funding so that we can do school-based recovery on the emotional and educational toll that the pandemic has taken on all of our communities. So I'm really proud to see all forms of our government step up, and now it's up to us to implement all of that at a local level. And the last piece, I also had the tremendous opportunity to get vaccinated during the last month. It was an incredibly emotional event for a kind of stop at a regular run-of-the-mill building to have an Oceanside firefighter volunteering to give their time to keep us safe was... It was really powerful, and there are a lot of neighborhoods that we still have in our city that are undervaccinated. So if you know someone that's 65-plus or someone that is vulnerable to the COVID-19, please, please encourage them to call 211 and make an appointment. There are lots of access points, including Tri-City, that has done a tremendous job of getting people vaccinated quickly, and I just, we want to make sure that our community is protected because now it's here, and it's up to us to make sure that our neighbors are getting it. Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. I'm going to turn it over to Eleanor. Do you have a board report tonight?
Yes, ma'am. To see the students tonight was really exciting. Can you hear me? Okay, all right. Again, to hear the students tonight was really exciting and very uplifting. I attended a great many community events as well as community meetings, but right now, for me, my priority is two-way bilingual immersion committee by the district. We're moving ahead. We're doing our master plan, and eventually, I would like to see, we all would like to see where two-way bilingual education is both horizontal going into the high schools as well as lateral in the sense that every school in Oceanside has a two-way bilingual immersion program, not just a plan but an actual program. And again, like our colleagues, my colleagues have said, please, please get vaccinated, take advantage of the opportunity. I know that some of the super sites have been kind of backed up, but if you go to Kaiser, VIVA, CVS, it goes very quickly and is very little organized. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Eleanor. I'm Raquel. Do you have a board report?
I actually do. I want to thank everybody again for just being here and taking the time to be here, one. Two, also, I did attend community committee meetings that I'm a part of within our community and was able to see actually a lot of the sports going through El Camino, which, if you're not a part of the Facebook page that allows you to see the sports that are going through and be a part of it through that, through the videos and the shots that they're doing, it's amazing. I love being able to see our students back on the field again, and I can't wait to actually be in person screaming and yelling like we used to be out on the football fields and everywhere. So I applaud all our students for getting back there, for just wanting to be able to advocate for themselves to be able to be out on the field and wanting now for their families to be able to be a part of what they do well, which is not only their academics but also out in their sports. So I applaud you all, and I thank you again just for our staff to again remember that you are able to get vaccinated. Please, for those in our community, if you know of someone that needs help, please help them so that they can actually get vaccinated if they're unable to get out there or to know exactly how to do it. Please, please be there for one another so that we can actually get this in our community and be a successful community as a whole, to be there for one another and work with each other. So I thank you all.
Thanks, Raquel. Mike, do you have a board report tonight?
Yes, briefly, I want to echo some of the things that you've all said. It's great that the kids are getting the activities back on the fields, and it's also wonderful that yesterday was the first day for our sped population to be coming back, K through the elementary level, and I heard that was really a good experience from some firsthand folks that were teaching it, and glad to be able to be close to their kids, and looking forward to next week with the K through 5 kids coming into school, and so happy that we've got the focus on allowing the teachers and our sports staff to get the vaccinations now that we cleared that hurdle. And yeah, we've got to get them all in there, but it's happening, and I feel really positive about that. So thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. I have a short board report. I attended four district meetings since our last board meeting, the two-way bilingual immersion, like Eleanor. We had an LCAP meeting. We did a district technology meeting, and I also attended a parent-partner meeting for our parents and families that have students with disabilities that are in our special education program. That was amazing. Other than that, get vaccinated. So we'll move on to general consent, item 5. I call for a motion to approve general consent items.
So move items on the consent.
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second. Any discussions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor of approving the general consent items?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Enjoy that Harry Potter club. I couldn't, I could not let it go.
All right. All right, motion carries 5-0. So we're moving on to item 7A, New Certificate of Job Description, Elementary Intervention Teacher. I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Board. This item is for your approval for the new creation of the intervention teacher for elementary school.
All right, do we have any questions for staff at this point, board members?
Just for general information sake, this is the 36 teachers that were hired to provide intervention across the elementary school.
This would cover those positions as well as the more traditional Title I-funded intervention teachers that we use for small group targeted instruction in our elementary schools.
In which Eric just noted that, but that was on our consent item this evening to approve those 36 positions in the system formally. So that's a patting of the back for ourselves for that action. I appreciate staff moving that forward, but slightly off topic there.
Well, I'll entertain a motion to approve item 7A.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Motion carries 5-0. Moving on to item 7C, Ratification of Teaching Assignments Under Education Code 44258.7.
Yes, this requires board approval. It's to allow two middle school teachers that are teaching elective classes outside their credential area voluntarily, and with this action, they'll be approved under this ed code to do so.
Thanks for that explanation. Do we have any questions for Dr. McAtire? I'll make a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I have everybody. All right, there we go. Motion carries 5-0. Next item on the agenda, item 8A, Approval of New Course Outline for Oceanside Unified School District Course of Study.
Good evening, Board. This item is for your consideration of a new course offered in our district. This is AP Research, which will be focused on critical thinking, reading, and writing. It was approved from our Curriculum Advisory Committee and will be a great offering in the A through G college prep coursework under G. So approval of this will allow our students to receive a rigorous course that will prepare them for college.
Thank you, Dr. Lovey. Do we have any questions? All right, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
I'll second.
All right, I have a first and a second. All in favor of approving item 8A?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries 5-0. Now we're moving on to item 8B, which is what? All 391 people are probably waiting for? The update on the COVID-19?
You're echoing.
Reopening schools for in-person instruction.
My apologies, Mike. Thank you, Dr. Biggin. We do have a presentation tonight on this topic, so Mr. Moon will bring that presentation up on the screen so folks can see it. So tonight, we just want to first start by reminding the board of previous board direction. We're primarily going to focus on secondary schools since the board has already authorized the return of elementary students. That started yesterday and will continue through next week. So on the next slide, we'll just remind the board of previous board direction regarding secondary schools, and this was to continue secondary schools in virtual learning per CDPH guidelines in the California Blueprint for a Safer Economy, and reassess secondary schools when the county reenters the red tier, as we may not consider in-person instruction in secondary schools until we are back in the red tier. So our presentation tonight focuses on returning to that red tier, which we didn't quite make today, but we do have some very hot-off-the-press information about that. So we're going to share the changes with you that have happened. As you know, things happen very quick, and this last month has been no different. Our last board meeting was February 9th, and since then, we have a new legislative agreement signed by our governor that we're going to give you a brief update on, and that is SB 86. There have been some updated California Department of Public Health Guidelines. There have been updates to There have been updates to local case rates. And then we're also going to share a little bit more detailed information on thoughts and plans for secondary credit recovery support and intervention and ultimately our recommendation for the return of secondary schools. So to give us a brief update on the components of SB eighty-six is our chief business official, Dr. Andy Norman.
Thank you, Dr. Vitale. ABSB eighty-six was signed into law on Friday, March fifth, and as a result, the following has been established. A two billion dollar in-person instruction grant, a four point six billion dollar expanded learning opportunities grant, state audit requirements, COVID nineteen reporting and public health requirements, and prioritization of vaccines for education staff. In the next few slides, I'll be focusing on the in-person reopening grant and the expanded learning opportunities grant. Next slide. The requirements of the two billion dollar in-person instruction grant include providing in-person instruction by April first of twenty twenty-one. Districts can provide in-person learning as late as May fifteenth, but they will lose out on one percent of funding for each day. They do not provide in-person learning until May fifteenth, after which they are no longer eligible for any of this funding. In-person instruction must be provided through the end of the school year and the grant will be apportioned on the basis of our district LCFF entitlement. Funds will be made available to districts in two installments, one in May and one in August. The second grant in ABSB eighty-six is the four point six billion dollar expanded learning opportunities grant. This grant allows for flexibility with implementing learning recovery programs. Funding will be comprised of one thousand dollar per homeless student and the remainder will be based on the LCFF formula entitlement. Eighty-five percent of the funds for in-person support and instruction. Ten percent of the funds will be used to hire and retain paraprofessionals. This can be considered part of the eighty-five percent for in-person support. And the paraprofessionals will be there, of course, to work with students in person and fifteen percent can be used for distance learning. Next slide, please. Thank you. In terms of timelines, our expenditure plans for ABSB eighty-six will be required for by June first of twenty twenty-one. The funds will be available through August thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. And as I said before, we will get to payments for both of these grants, one in May and one in August. Thank you.
So that leads us into new guidelines from the California Department of Public Health. And Dr. Lovey, you are going to take it from here.
Yes, so since the last board meeting, the CDPH has new school reopening process. And in this new guidance, it talks about how secondary students may return to in-person learning after a county is in the red tier. Once a county is in the red tier, a district has three weeks to implement in-person learning, regardless of a change in status that might happen during that same window. Next slide, please. So we'd like to review a little bit over the past year as the student report today talked about. It's been a year that we have been facing COVID nineteen as a state, district and country. And so wanted to give you the case rates over the past year, week by week. What you can see in this graph is that one year ago this week, we had nineteen lab confirmed cases in San Diego. March thirteenth, we had a statement of emergency declared. And on March twenty-ninth, a stay-at-home order was put in place to flatten the curve. And so you can see from this graph, we had a pretty flat experience quite a way through there. A surge in July and then again in November of twenty twenty, rising steadily to a peak of twenty-four thousand one hundred cases in one week, the week of January second, twenty twenty-one. At that point, we started to see a decline in to our most recent weekly count of approximately three thousand five hundred and eighty-one cases with expected to have it drop below three hundred in the very near future once all the accounts come in. Next slides, please. As you know, we also want to be looking into the future and we want to be looking not just at the current case rates, but is COVID nineteen spreading in the community or is it declining? So one of the things you can see from this slide is if you look at the number one, one means for every person infected with COVID nineteen, if you have an R O number of one, it means that that person infects one other person. If the R O number is above one, so for example, one point one, which it was in December of twenty twenty, the case rates are actually increasing. So that's where you start to see the peak in the data. When you go fall below one to point seventy-one, like we can see from this graph, it is a confident indicator that case rates are declining and will continue to decline within the near future. Next slide, please. This slide also shows some of the actions that we've taken over time. So in this slide, again, you see from March twenty-ninth to June eleventh, gyms, bars, hotels were closed for approximately ten weeks in an effort to flatten the curve. And July, I'm sorry, in June twelfth, they reopened and by July thirteenth, they were closed again in response to the surge. In August thirty-first, we saw that we have a new blueprint for a safer economy, which we've been working with up until this week for how we make decisions based on case rates. You will see that in November tenth, we entered the purple tier. And in December sixth, we entered into what some people call the deep purple level, which is the regional stay-at-home order. And again, you can see that peak on January twenty-fifth, the lift of the regional stay-at-home order was lifted and in February, we are now coming close to having under three hundred cases per week reported. Next slide, please. So throughout this, we have talked about the tiers. So the first time this blueprint for a safer economy was put forward was August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. And in this blueprint, it established case rate numbers for different tiers and what kinds of businesses and activities were allowed under each tier. At that time, purple was the most restrictive, followed by red, then orange and yellow. What is particularly important for schools is the point between purple and red. Because schools have typically, according to the CDPH guidelines, been able to open once we are in the red tier. So that meant that we would have less than seven cases per one hundred thousand as a county. Next slide, please. March fifth, a new blueprint for safety economy came out. This is a new criteria. It still uses the four colored bands, but it also talks about the importance of having people vaccinated. So if you look along the top row, the case rates of seven per one hundred thousand population, that's our old system. But if you look at the second row where it says that it's two million doses of vaccine are administered, then we can have a change in the case rates so that purple will be triggered by less than ten cases per one hundred thousand. This is very important information for us so that we can have the opportunity to reopen for in-person learning, not just for our elementary students, but for our secondary students. So that difference in three cases will allow us to address the needs of our community more readily. Next slide, please. So as you can see in this graphic, we've shown this graphic before, this shows the case rates in Oceanside. As of March fourth, the case rate is thirteen point nine in Oceanside. And previously, it was at nineteen point three. So you can see that over time, we are having a steady decline. Case rates are declining. People are becoming vaccinated. So we are definitely on the right track towards a safer reopening. To give you an example of this, at the peak of this, at time in our district, we were at approximately eighty, sorry, seventy-seven cases. Next slide, please. We also have the case rates, the triggers to modify the health orders. Last week, on the third of March, we read a case rate of ten point eight. You can see based on the new criteria for the tiers, we are very, very close to entering the last week, we were very close to entering the red tier. And if you look at the case rates that came out just this afternoon about four o'clock, we are at eight point eight, which based on the new criteria of the number of vaccinations that have been administered, would allow us to enter the red. What we know from information that we have received from the California Department of Health and from our local SD COE contacts, we fully expect that the mark of having two million vaccinations will be reached within the next few days, which then leads us to expect that we will be in the red tier next Tuesday. So this is all very good news. And just for perspective, board, I'd like you to know that when we were monitoring this, the peak in January, we were up to seventy-seven cases per one hundred thousand in our county. With now being at eight point eight, this is very good news and showing great progress in our health measures. Next slide, I believe belongs to Dr. McAtter.
Thank you, Dr. Lovey. So as our superintendent, Dr. Vitale, shared, the good news that vaccinations are here and they are available to our employees. The process was controlled through the county and how they distributed and made eligibility lists for those that could get vaccinations. The first phase was one A tier one, and that was the initial phase that went out to our healthcare providers and those that were over seventy-five years of age. The second tier or second phase, one A B, is where we currently are. And they've lowered the age requirement to sixty-five years and older and included our workers, our education and childcare providers that are now eligible to receive the vaccination. Next slide. Where we'll be going is phase one C. That's next. They seem to be able to accelerate the release of these phases as more vaccinations become available. One C will allow persons sixteen to sixty-four with certain health conditions to be eligible to receive their vaccinations. And then that will lead us to the final phase, which is phase two, where general public will be provided access to receiving their vaccinations as well. Next slide. So in Oceanside, all of our one thousand nine hundred and eighty-five contracted employees have received eligibility and information to receive their vaccinations. They, there are special locations that are set up throughout the county, one being at UC San Diego and another at Cal State University San Marcos, where educators can make appointments to receive their vaccinations. And this has been done through a special partnership between all county schools in San Diego and with Viva, our health provider, and the San Diego County Office of Education. There are lots of appointments that are available for employees. Like I said, we've already sent out information to almost two thousand of them. The next group that was phased in is all of our substitutes, which is over twelve hundred substitutes that are also eligible. And finally, our after-school care and childcare providers will be getting their notification by the end of this week. So that's the update for vaccinations. And I believe next is Dr. Lawrence with sports.
Thank you, Dr. McAtter. The California Department of Public Health Guidelines for Sports continue to provide specific guidance for which sports teams must adhere to while in activity. This includes the mandatory use of face coverings by players when on the sidelines, as well as coaches, support staff and observers at all times. The guidelines limit indoor activities to comply with capacity limits, which are determined by the tier we are within, we are within with the county. The guidance strongly suggests facial coverings to be worn by participants during practices and competition as tolerated. Physical distancing at least six feet and/or maximum extent possible and COVID nineteen testing of competing. In addition, student athletes are urged to engage in proper hygiene before, during and after activity. This will allow for the use of equipment such as balls and other objects. As a district, we continue to adhere to all of these requirements and guidelines. Our teams have access to all the recommended sanitation equipment and PPE. Next slide, please. On February nineteenth, the San Diego section of the CIF was made aware of a temporary restraining order that prevented the enforcement of any county or state shutdown order or any related orders that prevent youth in the county of San Diego from participating in high school or youth sports as long as they follow the same or similar COVID nineteen protocols used for competition in professional or collegiate sports within the county. Since this initial temporary restraining order, there have been updates and guidance provided by CIF to ensure client compliance with this order. Next slide. Currently, for this season of sport, outdoor sports that have recently begun, such as football and water polo, will be required to COVID test all student athletes and coaches within forty-eight hours of competition. And test results must be made available within twenty-four hours of play. This requirement will remain in place for outdoor sports until the adjusted case rate is less than seven per one hundred thousand. However, this testing requirement will currently remain for indoor sports, such as girls volleyball, regardless of the adjusted case rate at this time. This will also be the same requirement for season two indoor sports set to begin on March thirteenth. This includes badminton, boys and girls basketball, competitive cheer, boys volleyball and wrestling. For those sports already in place, such as cross-country, field hockey and swim and dive, they will continue to practice and compete in the same manner that they have without the need for testing. We are excited about the opening of our sports seasons and are working hard to ensure we are complying with these guidelines to ensure that our student athletes get to enjoy competing once again. Go Pirates and go Wildcats. Next, let's go, next slide, please. Too excited. The hybrid six through eight base schedule is is built with knowing that students are attending a K eight school. And many of the schools to, in many of the classes, the students attend school with their siblings. This schedule affords students to start school at the same time as the morning opening and attend virtual learning on the same day as their peers on this campus. The next slide, please. For the middle school schedule, this schedule allows for all students to start with a common understanding of what the expectations are for the week with the virtual day beginning on Monday. This will allow for a student, regardless of what group they are assigned, to understand the expectations for the week. In addition, students would engage in four periods of learning while on campus. Some middle school campuses have students engaged in two periods of learning in a core subject, which will allow for a student to see a teacher twice while on campus. In addition, this schedule does allow for students to maintain their daily schedule while at home through the virtual check-ins. Students while at home would check in and be provided with brief direction, then engage and works asynchronously at home. Students not on campus can engage in learning by completing the assignment posted on Google Classroom for the day to receive attendance and engagement credit. Next slide, please.
Yes. Can I, can I interrupt you?
Sure.
Because you go really fast. So, and I know we have over four hundred and sixteen people out there that are probably trying to frantically write stuff down. Can you go back to the first high school schedule and just kind of walk me through? If I had a student in group A, what, what it would look like? Just briefly, I'm sorry.
The hybrid middle school?
Yeah, start with them, that one right there.
If you were on the base school and you were in group A, you would come on campus on Monday and Tuesday. While those students who are on the group B, they would remain at home engaged in learning. They would complete the assignments based on the Google Classroom assignments that are posted by the teacher. On Wednesday, all students would engage in virtual learning by the teacher. They would engage in those periods for forty minutes each day. Then group B would then come on campus on Thursday and Friday. The virtual check-ins would be there for, to ensure that students, while they're at home, would keep pace with what they're doing on normally if they were on campus.
And how would I, if I'm a parent, how would I find out if my kid was in group A or group B?
Prior to the students being returned to school, students and their parents would be notified of which group they've been assigned. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Can you go through the middle school one? This is the base schools. So, right, this is North Terrace, Mesa.
Yes, and the base schools' virtual schedule again is on Wednesday because it is part of the K eight learning experience on the campus to ensure that the siblings while on the campus have the same schedules in part together. The middle school schedule begins with the virtual learning schedule where all students are given the same information on the virtual learning day of Monday. So they all have a base level understanding of what the expectations are for the week. Then on Tuesday, if I was in group A- Then on Tuesday, if I was in group A, then I would be on the campus for periods one, two, three and four, and then come back on Wednesday to engage in periods five, six and seven, five, six, seven and eight. During those times between each period, the teacher does check in with the group that is at home to ensure that the student is checking in, seeing if they're on, you know, that they're on pace with starting their work for that period and moving to the next level. The difference between the middle school and the base schedule is the difference in the virtual learning day starting on Monday.
All right, and then I just want to make sure I'm clear and other board members. The reason we're breaking it up into group A and group B is because we can only have half the students in the classroom due to the California Public Health Department regulations, right?
That is. That is correct. We would have to split it because at the secondary level, it is harder to cohort the students to ensure that we're doing in compliance. Our students' schedules shift. They do not necessarily move and travel together in one cohort space.
It's a madhouse.
Yes.
Dr. Lawrence?
Yes.
I, I kind of have a question comment thing. My concern, as we're run by several um parents, is that, is there any guarantee that um siblings will have the same schedule?
That is a good question. Um as we, it depends on where the students, the siblings are. If the siblings are in a, are on the same campus, the counselors and store port staff would work to ensure that that happens, or if they're in the same secondary uh or if they're in a high school, they could possibly be at the same um grouping, group A or group B. However, with the elementary school schedule being in an AM and PM, it is not, there is not a guarantee that that would be the same because they operate when the AM and PM were operating on a day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I ha- I have one thing right, real quick. Um. First, I just, I really want to applaud all the work that's been put into these schedules and, and I know that, you know, we, we get this right now and, and we're we're looking at it and reviewing it. And I know there's so much that the staff, the teachers, admins, all the hours that they put into, to just making these, these schedules work, these hybrid schedules, hybrid just doesn't work, period. I get that. I mean, it just, it's a horrible, no matter how you look at it, but and I applaud just all the, the hours that everybody's put into it, you know, on top of already your regular rigorous um schedules and the responsibilities that you already have as staff, teachers and everything else within our, our district. Just know that I, I do appreciate all the work, but I struggle as a parent. I struggle with the loss of, of time of engagement with the student and the teacher because our teachers have done an amazing job. I know with my son, um the teachers have done an amazing and amazing job with keeping the student engaged and, and working with them and, and doing that face to face because you have them every single day currently. The way that this, this new schedule is, is that we lose them and I'm, I'm, I worry about the students that are already currently not engaged and are already going to um that are already not participating. I worry that, that we're going to lose them and they're going to lose that contact that they have with their teachers currently. Our, our teachers, I feel, are a lot of, are, are the ones that, they're in the forefront. So, so you, you guys are out there just pushing and, and bringing in the student and getting them to do what they need to do. But I feel like we're going to lose that, that contact by going with this schedule the way that we currently are. And I know that you guys have put in so much work into these schedules. Again, just like with everything else on top of, now I'm, you know, we're, we're here. And, and seeing the schedule right now and, and trying to work through it and, and in my own head, as a parent, in my own head, trying to make it work and for, not only for just my student, but other students on what they would lose is, you know, I just, I, that, I have a huge concern for that because I know we want our students back. I want them so back, so, so much. Because of that social emotional support, you know, that they, that they're lacking right now. They, they truly need to be back there. And I know our students are just dying to get them back into their classrooms full-time as quickly as we can and as safely as we can. Um for everybody, not only for, for our students, but for our staff and our teachers and everybody as a whole. Um but I, I struggle with this, this schedule and with what our students are going to lose and not being able to have that contact with their teacher.
Yes. Thank you for that.
You want to take us through the high school schedule? I think that's next.
Yes, I can do that. The high school schedule also allows for all students to start with a common understanding of the expectations for the week. Students would engage in eighty-three minutes of learning each period. Students would also continue to have the option to go to their teacher for support during office hours to get further support. Though this is available at all secondary levels, this is an option that high school students have stated that they have liked during virtual learning that would continue to be available. Next um slide, please. The hybrid schedule and as um Trusty Alvarez has said, the hybrid schedule is a transitional schedule that is meant to allow us to easily return to full virtual learning if conditions require it and more hopefully prepares us to phase into a normal learning schedule that we are accustomed to when the conditions permit. Because of the transitional nature of a hybrid schedule, it doesn't allow us to fully adopt a fully traditional schedule, what puts us into, it puts us into an uncomfortable space of being in the middle. That's what we're feeling at this moment. The opportunity that these schedules provide is a bridge to connect us back to an on ca- on-campus learning. Students have the opportunity to reacquaint themselves with learning on campus with the expertise of their teachers and supported their peers in a smaller class-sized learning environment. While on campus, students will have easy access to on-campus supports and extended learning opportunities. Students within this schedule have the ability to engage asynchronously when they are not attending on campus through the assignments posted on Google Classroom. We also acknowledge the challenge of the hybrid schedules that were just shared with you. One of the challenges is the frequency of access a student would have to their teacher. The schedules presented allow for most students to have the opportunity to see their teacher once in person and then once again virtually. However, when looking into adding one more day for student learning on campus, it would require that students would attend periods one through six at the high school level or periods one through seven on campus. This would provide a gain of fifteen minutes with their teacher over two mi- two days at the middle school level and seven minutes over two days at the high school level per teacher. In addition, having students attend all periods in a day, though grouped into two groups poses a greater risk of potential spread impacting each period when, which could cause a shutdown of a greater number of classes. Due to the specific needs of elementary and that which is necessary to support secondary students, our schedules do not align, which we know may be an issue for some families. Our proposed schedule are similarly structured to the schedules proposed or in use by schools or districts such as Grossmont, Carlsbad High School, Capistrana Unified School District and Temecula Valley Unified School District. Next slide, please. To support the needs of students within our secondary schools, we recognize the importance of providing our scholars with a strong base of support that would allow them to successfully rise to their greatest potential. At each school site, intervention supports will be offered and expanded once students are on campus. Students will have the opportunity to engage in small group tutoring sessions on campus or in a virtual learning send, setting. Students who have experienced challenges in multiple content areas will receive targeted support in core content areas by content area teachers who will provide targeted lessons based on formative assessment results that indicate areas of need of growth. Credit recovery will also be offered to high school students at the high school level through both Apex and Content Area Teachers who can provide small groups of students um with support who have found it challenging to engage in online settings. In addition, secondary learning centers will remain open to support our students and will be expanded to include homework and enrichment opportunities for students while on campus. Enrichment opportunities will be provided to increase the success of our students who will be preparing to take the AP tests. We will also engage in structured ELD enrichments for our ELD students through supplemental lessons and learning activities that will support their growth. We plan to offer this year robust summer learning opportunities to our students that include summer school, which will support students at the middle and high school levels who need so further support or credit recovery in core content areas. Summer Bridge will be offered to incoming sixth and ninth graders at the middle and high school levels. This will be a fun supportive opportunity for students to become familiar with the culture of the school they would attend, while also developing an understanding of the content expectation and keys to success as a secondary student and becoming connected to student leaders on the campus who they can go to while attending their new middle or high school. Summer enrichment camps will be offered in the areas of riding, two-way bilingual immersion and other site-specific areas that will be in addition to any secondary ELD summer enrichment programs and site-specific um enrichment programs that are created by the site. These supportive opportunities are being provided so that we are able to provide a menu of valuable supports that will reach our students in ways that will make the best difference for our scholars. Next slide. All of our offerings on our campuses are provided in a manner that follow all health and safety protocol. This continues to be the framework upon which we have made our decisions in designing these secondary schedules and supports for our scholars. Now, Dr. Vit- Vitale.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. And as we continue to balance uh health and safety needs of our community and educational outcomes of our students, uh that's what our recommendations have been based on. And so our recommendation uh for our secondary students is that all secondary students return March twenty-ninth to a hybrid in-person instruction following the San Diego County designation of the red tier. Uh we do anticipate through information from the um San Diego Department of Health and through the San Diego County Office of Education that while we didn't make the red tier today, we do anticipate that that's going to happen. Uh that the metrics will change within the next few days to allow us uh by March sixteenth to be in the red tier. We'd like to, um there are two windows of time that we uh need to be able to deal with. And that's the twenty-one day window uh for opening following that red tier designation and a ten-day notification uh to our staff. So by selecting the date of March twenty-ninth uh and notifying staff tomorrow, we um meet that ten-day notification and that uh notification to staff in twenty-one day window. And of course, if something off were to happen and we didn't enter the red tier, we could always change that date. We basically would have two and a half weeks to do that. But uh our recommendation to the Board of Education is that all secondary students return March twenty-ninth. We know that there are many more questions. We're happy to entertain all questions from the board. And Dr. Begin, if you want to take public comment, however you want to move forward.
Um that's a lot of information. I would like to take public comment. We, we have nine public comments at this point. Um I'd like to take those first, allow the board members to hear from, hear from the public um on this topic and then it also help us formulate our questions and comments. Is that okay, fellow board members? Let's give it that. All right.
Yep.
All right, all right. We'll start with our public comments. We're going to limit these to three minutes, so please um adhere to the timeline. That will be in front of you. You will have a counter in front of you. Let's go ahead and get started. We'll call several people at one time, just so you're queued up and you're ready. Please look for your name in the, when it gets called up and promoted. I'll turn it over to staff.
Okay, our first four people will be Jennifer Miller, Emily Lamb, Jaron Lamb and Elaine Keswick.
All right, I'm going to go with, I want to say the name right, Jaron Lamb. Go ahead, you have three minutes.
So hi, I'm Jaren Lamb. Um I'm a sophomore at El Camino High School. Um so it was a little confusing what you guys were saying about the um hybrid schedule. So um one thing I thought of was, um I wasn't sure if the like beginning, um the check-in for like group B on the first two days was like just a check-in and then the students would leave. Um I'd recommend having like a Zoom open and a student checking it to um have just, um because with the elementary school when they first opened up, um they only had two days with their teacher and then the rest of the time was kind of just thrown up in the air. And so I think it would be a good idea to have a teacher all the time. And so you could have um a mix of Zoom and in-person and just have a Zoom running. And if the teacher need hu- help, they can just have a student uh on a Chromebook on the Zoom to check. Um one thing I noticed is some of the statistics I saw last time um not only showed improvement among students, it also showed like a decrease um in scores um like the middle kind of spread. Um so I think in-person would be a really good idea. Um I don't know how many of you have attended an M uh virtual class, but there's been times where I've been in person on the Zoom with my camera on like because the teacher's camera is broken and none of the other students will turn on their camera. So like, I've known people who just kind of um hop on their phone and just like not pay attention in class, but um in-person school would help fix that. Uh that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Jaron, for sharing. What grade are you in again?
I'm a sophomore.
Okay, great. Thank you for sharing. Our next speaker is Elaine Keswick. You're on, Elaine.
All right. Hi. Good evening. My name is Elaine Keswick. I want to start by acknowledging that this district has taken a first step towards school reopening with the elementary split day hybrid schedule. Tonight, you've also proposed a hybrid middle and high school schedule. But honestly, this is what OUSD should have done since um September. So we will call it a very delayed first step. Today, our county's adjusted case rate is eight point eight. That means we should be entering the red tier shortly, as you said. Also, our case rate is almost at the point where the CDC calls for all grades to be back in the classroom for full-time instruction. In light of the rapidly decreasing case rates and increasing vaccination rates, I'd like to know that the district is really looking at getting the sped preschool classes back for four days per week. My daughter has a cohort of five students. They attend two days per week for two and a half hours each day, while a cohort of four students attends the other two days. The same teacher and same instructional assistants interact with both the cohorts. If the district put the two cohorts together for a total of nine students, which is still far less than the state's allowed number per cohorting guidance, all of the kids could attend four days per week. Doing this would bring the district far closer to fully implementing Corals and her peers' IEPs. I've heard the district excuses about the lack of mask wearing by some students as a reason to not do four days per week. I find it interesting that this has not stopped all of the surrounding districts or all of the private preschools from safely and successfully bringing their students back for full-time or close to that. Please stop making excuses and take action. Additionally, I am deeply concerned when I see from the last meeting how the I-ready exam data in math and language arts was presented to put, paint an overly optimistic picture of learning loss. As a mother of three kids ages eight months to six years old and an educator of fifteen years, having taught in high school in Venezuela, fourth and first grades locally and running my own tutoring company for ten years, I see through your misleading repres- representation of the data. Kids who were struggling are struggling more. The inequities that were already present in our educational system have been exacerbated. Stop trying to justify the use of a virtual system that does not meet the needs of so many of our most impacted students. And when as board members, you lean into the narrative of schools potentially being unsafe, you are culpable of convincing certain families that they shouldn't return to in-person instruction. The collective narrative needs to change. Promote the positive messaging to all families about the importance of being in school. Stop with the elaborate plans that don't really ever come to fruition. Do what OUSD knows how to do. Teach our kids in person. Be flexible and creative in your approach to make this happen. Be flexible and creative in your approach to make this happen, and finally, put our kids first. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Amy Palmer?
Members of the board, while I'm happy that our K-5 students are returning to the classroom next week, I feel that your efforts have been lackluster and ill-thought-out. First, let's discuss the intervention classes you've offered for only first and second graders. I swear this has relevance. We're given three days to submit a poorly worded application sent out only to students whose iReady test scores were far behind where they should be. The dates were misleading, the time was rushed, the plans worked out between intervention teachers and regular teachers were not well thought out, and the schedules caused massive complications that mostly involved taking students out of their normal classrooms. They should have started when all the students went back to school instead of this week. The intervention teachers did not have a lot of the answers to questions we parents had resulting in multiple follow-up emails. It's a mess. How is this supposed to help our students? I hope your credit recovery intervention for the middle and high school students is better thought out than the elementary school intervention. Now, let's talk about the three students in this district who've killed themselves in the last two weeks. Or would you rather forget about that? Because those are the students you failed. While our elementary school students are excruciatingly slowly going back to school, our middle and high school students are being further exiled, isolated, and left out. They haven't even been part of your discussions for the last 11 months. When you look at the health data from the beta.healthdata.gov site for the week of February 20th to February 26th of this year, California as a state is ranked 41 out of all the states in new cases per 100,000. We're ranked better than New York, we're ranked better than Texas, we're ranked better than Virginia and Washington DC, all of which are open for in-person learning. Also, taking into account the CDC indicators and thresholds for community transmission, less than nine new cases per 100,000 and a positivity rate of less than 5% puts us in the blue, low-transmission tier. As our numbers currently sit at 8.8 cases per 100,000 and a positivity rate of less than 4%, what does all this mean? Our schools, K through 12, can open for in-person learning. All of our K-12 schools can offer sports and extracurricular activities in person. Beta.healthdata.gov site state profile also has a different tiering system that is more than our outdated one we've been using since the beginning. That puts us in the light green tier. This website is directly accessed from CDC.gov, which is the entity we should be basing our data on and metrics, since it's their job to study disease and put out safe guidelines for the general public, not the blueprint for a safer economy. The metrics for school reopening from the CDC is what we should be following. If you need help finding these resources, I'd be happy to email them to you. And just because my kids are in elementary school doesn't mean I'm not going to stop fighting for all the kids when they begin in-person instruction. It could have been my kids. It could be my kids in the future. It's my neighbor's kids, it's my friend's kids, they're all our kids, and we are failing them. You focus too much on metrics and numbers and not enough on how and when to reopen the schools. Focus on that. Reopening the schools now. And you said so yourself, Ms. Alvarez, that hybrid school schedules don't work, and we've told you virtual learning doesn't work. Haven't they suffered enough? Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Victoria Mariani, you're up next.
Yay. Good evening, students, families, staff, and board members. I'm Teacher Victoria Mariani, and I'm speaking tonight about OUSD's plan to return in-person learning. This year has been fraught with challenges and changes, and as a teacher, I've been flexible in my planning, delivery, and assessment of instruction. The district's most recent plan to reopen schools was no doubt planned for by leaders from the district office with seemingly little to no input from classroom teachers. This is unfortunately recurring theme in OUSD's planning strategy. The AM PM return has advantages and disadvantages, and teachers like myself will rise to the occasion and make it work for scholars. However, OUSD's plans for mediation are blatantly flawed. First off, the plan calls for three to six weeks of remediation. With all due respect, I've been teaching after-school and/or tutoring students in grade kindergarten through sixth for at least 17 years, and this is not at all a realistic timeframe, especially in the area of reading. Teaching in spurts and then stopping to reassess and regroup is, in my professional opinion, a waste of time and resources. Six weeks should be the minimum length of instruction, with two months or to the end of the school year being an ideal timeframe for students to demonstrate growth. Secondly, OUSD's plan is to start with second grade. Well, I teach fifth grade, where students have an online learning for one-third of their fourth grade year, most of their fifth grade year, and who will be promoting to middle school in three months. Their current second graders have three more years left in elementary school. Our upper-grade students should be our priority. We cannot send these students off to middle school without an attempt to give them a solid foundation of basic skills. Lastly, I do not believe that randomly assigning students AM PM timing spots based on the previous hybrid schedule of Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday was in the best interest of teachers, families, or students. I have a real concern that students are in need of extra support academically and are in the PM schedule will have a cognitive overload. According to OUSD's schedule, they will receive instruction from a site-support teacher for three hours in the morning and then attend their core class with their teacher for three more hours in the afternoon? Developmentally, this is not ideal. These students should be in their core class, learning grade-level standards and content with their classroom teacher when they are fresh, and then attend remediation support classes in the afternoon to build the targeted areas that they need to improve, many of which are skills from previous grade levels. I understand that I am but one lone voice in the chorus of OUSD teachers, and I know the district leaders have a lot on the table to consider when planning for big changes such as this. But I just humbly ask that our practitioners, our OUSD teachers, could just be included in these discussions. We deserve to have a seat at the table, as we are the touchpoint between OUSD edicts and the effect that they have on Oceanside students and learning.
Thank you, Victoria.
Thank you so much for listening.
Our next speaker is Todd Madison. There you go, Todd.
Hi. So as we come up on the first birthday of school closings, we once again see half-measures from OUSD designed more to make people think a real effort is being made to open schools for our kids than actually do that. So far, we've seen over $31 million provided to OUSD to enable reopening, but as of today, our schools are not yet fully open. We know enrollment is down nearly 10%, but funding per ADA is being held steady, which means the district is being given over $20 million to educate kids they aren't educating. But as of today, our schools are not yet fully open. Now, we see the state routing another $6.6 billion into this, with more to come from federal legislation, perhaps twice as much. And as of today, our schools are not yet fully open. How long will it be before we hear the call to use that money to give everyone another round of bonus raises? That's what happened every time we found extra money in the past, not reduce class sizes, not improve materials, not better support for kids who need it, but more money for the people who work here, reliably, every time. On reopening, parents have been doing everything they possibly can to express their frustration, as we've heard tonight. Not only did I hear that as a candidate for board last year, but I'm also a founding member of the Parent Association Group, parent advocates helping with a lawsuit suing to reopen districts around San Diego County. For anyone interested, that lawsuit goes in front of a judge tomorrow morning. Parents who want to know the results are encouraged to join the Parent Association at parentassociation.org and follow the Parent Association page on Facebook for the latest news. We need all parents to be a part of the solution. Join our rally on Saturday downtown, 10:00 AM, at the County Admin Building to demonstrate that. Now, like anyone who wants to solve problems, I like to look at not only the problem in front of me, but why the problem occurred in the first place. The reason here is clear. It's because we allowed our kids to be taken hostage and held as pawns in a political battle, one that's being fought more for the benefit of district special interests than our kids. As I said so many times last year, district first, not kids first. I've recently decided to join the effort to truly solve the problem, forcing our education system to pay attention to what parents want for their kids is number one, whether it's reopening or anything else. Enacting true school choice is the way to do that. Allowing parents whose kids are being used in a political battle to opt out and take them to an education system that works for them, not for itself, that's the real solution. I'm now the San Diego County Chair for the California Schools Choice Foundation. Would encourage any parents who want to fix the problem and support that effort to sign the petition in favor of school choice at Californiaschoolchoice.org/petition. More on the impact of declining enrollment in school choice and off-agenda comment in a bit. Parents would like to stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd.
Thank you.
Joanna Dorantes is our next speaker.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Good evening. My name is Joanna, and I am a parent of a sixth grader at Chavez Middle School and also a district employee. So what I'm looking at with this hybrid schedule, they will be getting less instruction time with their teachers, one day virtual, two days in-person, and only a five-minute virtual checking with their teachers on their two asynchronous dates. As of August, my child has been connecting with his teachers five days a week from 8:00 in the morning to about 1:00 PM. He knows the schedule and was expected of him. He's learned to adapt to a new school, to six different teachers, and he and his teachers have been amazing throughout all of this. Everyone wants to talk about mental health and how all of this has affected our kids. But do you guys think this change is going to help them when they have less than 61 days as of tomorrow left of school? No. One of my biggest concerns is consistency. Distance learning is the one consistent thing that these students have had. I understand everyone is not a fan, but they know what to expect and they have a routine. You expect them to be okay with returning, possibly in April, with all of possibility that they may end up having to revert back to virtual if there is a positive case. It's not okay to do this to these children or our teachers, having to flip-flop back and forth. I am one of those staff members that had had to quarantine last month due to a positive student in our class. And let me tell you, the toll it took on my mental health was not fun, and I can't even begin to imagine how it would affect a child. I implore you to make the decision now to continue distance learning for secondary schools for the remainder of this school year, to not further disrupt them from the chaos of the past and current year. We know COVID is not going to go away, but by fall of the next school year, those teachers and staff that want to be vaccinated will be fully vaccinated, and a better plan can be put in place. Thank you.
To Joanna. Our next speaker is Josephine Brinkman.
Good evening. Good evening, esteemed members of the Executive Cabinet and Board members. My name is Josephine Brinkman. I'm a teacher at Oceanside High School. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Executive Cabinet, Board members, my students, and the California Teachers Association members that have worked tirelessly during this historic COVID-19 pandemic. We will be in the history books. We have carried on through extraordinary times. To all the families in our communities and the world who have lost loved ones to COVID-19, I pass on my sincere condolences. Since March 13th, 2020, our district, our teachers, our students, and our Oceanside families have weathered this storm together. It isn't over, but I feel that our community members need to recognize the undying commitment and efforts that continue to go on behind the scenes. In no way do I wish to offend anyone, devalue anyone's feelings, or pretend to know it all. What I want to say is just some commentary from where I have been sitting for the past year. And what I see now, as we prepare for reopening, should we be able to do so, is nothing but dedication. Our teachers and our students have been working together for almost one year behind a tiny camera to stay in the learning game. Our district has been behind us, jumping through hoops for all of us to provide food, technology, Wi-Fi, and care to keep our home fires burning. Don't get me wrong, it is not perfect. We still have shortages in that department, but I for one will continue advocating for much-needed devices to keep our students connected, both in the hybrid and virtual classroom. Contrary to those not in the know, and from tonight, I can tell you there are several of you out there. You're not in the know. Sorry, no offense. Student learning has never ceased for all students and definitely is not lost. What has been lost is faith, trust, and respect for those in district leadership and for the very teachers who serve in the classroom. These two have been some of the ugly side effects of COVID-19. Getting computers, PPE, hand sanitizer will be provided when we return, but tender, loving care, compassion, and common sense can't be bought. But a simple thank you for what you do, for what all of us do in education, goes a long way, people. Try practicing that, and it will grow tenfold, I promise. Thank you to every custodian, nutrition staff member, security staff, our teachers, and our district leaders. But most importantly, thank you for our students in advance of reopening. We are behind you, and we will get through this together. P.S. Teachers are priceless. That's why those parents raging for students to return to school want us back so badly, and we are worth every damn penny and dollar and more. So thank you for listening, and we're going to get through this. Hang in there, people.
Thank you, Josephine. That is the end of our public comments. Dr. Vitale, do you want to share something?
Yes. It is a practice not to respond or comment on a public comment, but I just need to make a correction. The person that mentioned that we had three suicides within our district, we have no confirmation of that. While we are aware that there are students from North County schools in other districts that have taken their life, we have no confirmation of that happening with any student during this last year in the Oceanside Unified School District. And our thoughts and prayers and love goes out to those families that are dealing with the loss of their children.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Julie, for clarifying that, too. And it is, we do have a right to respond under these public comments because it's topical to the subject matter here, so we can correct, so we choose if we do. And with any of the comments that speakers have thrown out our way, their view of how we've treated this. So just to, like, colleagues there, remind ourselves that we can volley back if we so choose. Thank you, Mr. Madison. I appreciate you coming up back up in the form again. I'm glad you got a new group.
All right. Thank you. So, all right, we're going to, we had public input. We had a lot of information at our board discussion and any opportunity for questions, board members, colleagues. Anybody want to start? Or anybody know where to start?
I just want to say, you know, for me, this is good news. And I'd like to compliment everyone in the district that's been guided by science and to move our district forward. You know, I think we are really unique. I know in North County and probably more county-wide, we're one of the few districts in which we didn't open and close, open and close, open and close. I think we really sat down and thought through what it is we need to do to enable our students to be achievers. So, thank you. And I am anticipating a very safe return, and I'm looking forward to when we can be open, on-ground, you know, full day. Thank you.
Thanks, Eleanor. Anyone else want to ask questions or share your initial thoughts? Yeah, I heard. You did, Raquel. Well, I was pointing that up. I just want to say.
Greg, can you pull up the presentation and display the high school schedule, please?
I just wanted to share, I'm a parent of a middle schooler, and my middle schooler is doing well in the distance learning. It's taken a lot of support, and he's, you know, middle school is hard for any student. But what I've learned in this pandemic is how we model behavior for our students, how we handle a crisis. This is a pandemic. No one's been through this before. I think that having grace for other people and teaching our kids that as well, to be patient when people are uncomfortable with changes or the situation that they're in, sometimes their behavior is anyways hard to manage. So I'm trying to teach my son to have grace with other people and to be patient through these trying times. I do want to say that as a board member, I, we get a lot of information about the purple tier, the red tier, the orange tier, the case rate, all these data points that can be rather confusing. But we had, there are a lot of rules, and they keep changing the rules as they show through these PowerPoint slides. The rules, I call them the rules, the guidelines, the goalposts, they keep altering them and shifting them, and we're constantly having to be flexible and pivot our way through there. So that So that takes patience. It takes a group of district staff stakeholders on that work group. I have to echo the sentiments of the other board members, the amount of tremendous work that goes into trying to put these schedules together, not just for the time that they interact with the students, but getting around the lunch schedule, the, all the rules about the four-foot distancing that are all laid out by the county public health. All of that is a huge challenge, so I just want to commend you as well. That work group did a tremendous job coming up with these schedules. It's like a matrix. So I'll leave it at that. Do we have a board member that, Eric, you want to?
So I just have a couple of questions. Dr. Lawrence or Dr. Lovey, I'm not sure who's fielding tonight. It, from the schedule that's in front of us, it shows that there's a virtual Monday, and it's a half-day. Is that right?
That's correct.
That our early release day, and that's what we currently have in place, too, as our current schedule aligns?
Yes.
And then for the students who are, for me mentally, this is because it has the B group going first and the A group second. But so if you're in the B group and you're getting checked in, that means you're in person on Thursday, Friday. So a B group student, this is what their day would look like, and just correct me if I'm wrong. They'd wake up and then they would do, at eight o'clock, they would log into Zoom. Their teacher, who is standing in front of a class of students, would be checking the roles to make sure that the other half of their class is in, and that's the first, that's that five-minute time period, and it's not counted in the classroom. It's not counted as like the other kids' class that are in person. Is that right?
That is correct. So the virtual check-in period of time is eight to 8:05, just for those students online during that period of time, not for checking in the rest of the school, the class that comes in. Those students from eight to 8:05, they would be checked in by the teacher. Teacher may give a brief instruction of what to do and then proceed to allow the other students to come in the class and then start with the rest of the class.
And so I guess my question more broadly to everyone is, is that really effective? And so it's like check, is it like taking a role for the day? Do they, is this, would they be counting as like a present on that day? Would the teacher be marking that down and reporting that?
Yes, they'd be marking the role for that, along with the student checking in with Google Classroom and completing assignments in their Google Classroom.
And then the afternoon office hours, if I were a student, again, it could be virtual students that they are, it could be students that were in class that day that are working on assignments later on. They could potentially have a whole lot of students coming into that virtual office hour that are from different subjects possibly, that are coming in asking about different things, even within the same class?
Yes, that's correct. So most of our teachers do not, they have a limited number of preps at the high school level. So it could be, you know, maybe three different subject editors or maybe different grade levels, but yeah. So it could be a variety of different students checking in for a variety of things. One of the things that we know is kids have different days and different times where they need support. And by leaving it open, I believe the work groups thought was that any student would have the opportunity every day to be able to come and ask what questions they needed to, whether they were in person or whether they were virtual.
Dr. Lawrence said that the schedule that we have is similar to other districts. Are other districts doing what the young man in public comment talked about with simultaneously doing, simultaneously teaching? As a teacher, I know that it's extremely difficult.
Yes, other districts are, are investigating or using some type of simultaneous means of engaging in a live streaming. That was just not one of our options at that time of design.
And it doesn't seem like a good option as, I mean, thinking as a teacher, you're trying to manage both groups. If you have a student that's on the computer and they're asking a question, the students that are in class can't hear it. So it seems like it'd be really hard to manage, and especially any of the courses that have to do with having discourse where the, where the kids need to talk with each other or consider things open. Is that one of the challenges that was discussed by the, by the work groups?
Yes, that was essentially exactly how you described it as one of the major concerns of making sure that they're able to, with the students in front of them, give them their undivided time while trying not to have to manage or split the time between those online and those before them, trying to manage the two student groups.
Okay, I'm gonna look around my pad. Does anybody else have questions before?
I don't have so much a question. Thanks for explaining the schedules. I'm a middle school parent, so I'm wearing that hat right this second, and I'm trying to figure out, you know, is my kid in Group A or Group B? I'm sure there's other parents out there trying to do this same thing and figuring out what's going to happen before school, after school? How's my student going to get support? They're going to, I'm worried that my child's going to see his teachers less than he already does right now in the distance world. I just have concerns, like my other board members have said, that our students will have less instructional time with their, their teachers. But I, you know, I have full faith that if we consider sending these schedules back to that work group, they can really look at the afternoon piece of this, you know, the independent practice, office hours, you know. Can they be adjusted? Can students have more time with virtual support? It just, I have concerns about the schedule piece of it, the afternoon part.
Is the, the thought and the concern, Stacy, that it's unstructured as it is? And we know that students benefit from structure, so somehow the work group could consider structuring that time? Is that what I hear, what you're saying?
I'm speaking from personal experience. My son will not go to office hours unless I twist his arm. Or he's really struggling with something in math or something. I have to make him go to those office hours. I would love to see some kind of accountability where they need to check in, especially when they've not seen his teacher face-to-face that day. It's his virtual day. I would love for him to be able to, you know, be able to connect with the teacher for a couple minutes, either reteach, whatever, whatever needs to be done. I'm not going to get into the weeds on that. But I just, I would love to see some more accountability for that, more than just a random office hour. And that's, that's my child, who is actually doing really well with the distance learning. So I get a lot of emails from parents that I have to respond to, and a lot of them, their students are really struggling with the distance learning piece of it and the unstructured time.
And I think for myself, as the parent of the middle schooler, that because mine's not struggling so much, but I'm afraid that he would struggle with then and go into, go into a negative of not having that enough time with a teacher or being able to go and, and speak to them about whatever questions that there may be. You know, some of our students are in advanced classes and, and stuff, and they need some, some kind of guidance and stuff. And so that five minutes is not going to be enough, I think, to get whatever questions or whatever help they may need. So it's a learning loss. Our teachers are amazing, and they listen and they hear, you know, just, you know, just like these work groups have listened and they've heard, you know, the needs of what we need to have and what, what needs to go back into these students and how they need to come back and what's going to work. And I'm just, I'm just worried that they're going to lose, we're going to lose students in this process, and I don't want that to happen. So is there a way that we can figure what, or figure out a way to do something with that afternoon gap that we may have with some of our students?
If you did have the kids. Oh, sorry.
Oh, I was just going to say, basically, we're kind of talking about accountability, and if there's a way to really monitor those students in the afternoon. First of all, I believe that the core classes should be taught in the morning. You know, I really feel that very passionately. But in the afternoon, there has to be a way to hold these students accountable. Yeah. How are we going to do that? And, and when we, I do want to ask Dr. Lovey a question about the critical thinking, reading, writing AP program.
Ms. Evans, I'm sorry, you cut out for a moment. All I heard is you wanted to ask a question about the AP reading. I didn't know what the question was.
Right, when we finish this part of our discussion.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. What I'm hearing right now is it seems like there's a thought around the idea of account, increasing accountability for students when we move to a hybrid situation, and that the concern being that, you know, students, as they are young, may not be able to manage their time as well as we would hope. Is that kind of what I'm hearing from the board, that we want to increase some accountability for students? And how could we use our schedules to ensure that we have that? And also parents, maybe, so they'd be able to know. I know as a parent of an adult child, but of course, he was a young person. I sometimes would have to like check to see, did you actually do the thing I asked you to do? Did you check in with your teacher? So maybe providing that same kind of support for families so that parents and teachers can become better partners. Is that what I'm hearing?
For me, yes, very much so.
I would have to say yes on that as well.
I would also say it's accountability is a good piece. It's also going to be beneficial for the class pace, too. If there is something that they can do with the, with those students in the afternoon, they're not going to have to do that morning attendance. So I would assume it would free up that time in the morning so that they could, the schedule may need to shift around that way. But also, it's, it's good for learning for the kids to be doing it on a daily basis, for their brains to be back at that, that topic and not have a like two-day gap where they're not really receiving that information and feedback from the teacher. So that would be, I would agree with my colleagues, that sounds like a really beneficial piece.
I have full faith that that work group, you know, if we send this back, that they'll be able to come up with some creative solution. And that that work group does have teachers and support staff and district leadership on it. So I think, I think they could be creative about the afternoon.
Yeah, I have faith in the district, too.
Our work groups have worked really hard, many, many hours, and this is, we've had, Dr. Lawrence, how many generations of these schedules as the, as the rules have changed from CDPH and our governor? We have, I couldn't tell you how many iterations that our teachers have patiently put together through the work group process. We've continued to collaborate, and as we find out more and we know more, and as we've learned more over time about COVID, the health impact and how we've adjusted. So I know our teachers, they're the ones who have the best finger on the pulse, our, our public speaker. We have teachers who spoke. I think that teachers can find ways to really make things work better than we can. And I know under Dr. Lawrence's leadership, he's guided and done what he can, and, but he is an expert at listening and making sure that he is providing the information that the team needs by comparing our approach to the approaches across the state. So, Dr. Lawrence, that's been your experience with our work groups. Their expertise has come through.
Yes, absolutely. Our, our teachers, our support staff have done a great job of vetting the different options that we put forward with them, thinking through different ways in which we need to possibly approach and support students, knowing that these, the hybrid is not the best schedule, but it is a transitional schedule to get us back to some state of normalcy once that time is allowed. Our, the teachers, I'm really proud to, to work with them in the work groups and all of those leaders also that are part of it, because we also think outside the box and inside the box. Even with the virtual check-in, that was our way of trying to think about the middle school student, student who needs some type of a pace to keep going in the class while they're at home, to say, still time to wake up, still time to engage, next period, even at the high school level. So these are the things that we were thoughtful in a different approach. And I believe our work group has seen schedules with the options, options at the end that we can go back to and bring back with what you're giving us guidance. And again, kudos to all work group members, CSA staff and leaders for all of your support. I, it's an honor to work with you all.
Thank you, Dr. Lawrence. Well, I, unless my other board members have any other questions, I'd like to make a motion to accept the staff recommendation that all secondary students return March 29th, 2021, the hybrid in-person instruction following the San Diego County designation of red tier.
I second that wholeheartedly.
In the discussion moment, I have other COVID-19 things that are not that, but we can do it. We should probably finish this motion and then do it further on that.
Right. Well, I'll go ahead and I'll call for the vote. All in favor of accepting the staff recommendation, say aye.
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 Motion carries, 5-0. And then Eric, you have more questions? Let's hear them, and then we'll take a break after that.
Students, we often talk about our students who are in different schedules than our other, than our other students that are in maybe their months of your programs or, so I have similar questions to that group at the secondary level. Are they going to be, is the recommendation from our work groups that they would be on a hybrid schedule, too, where they're coming in twice a week for the eight to 11:30 time period, or eight to 12?
Yes.
You have the response, Mercedes. I'm not quite sure I understood the question, but if you did, you can answer it.
I believe Mr. Joyce's question is, are our students who have special needs, who range everywhere, from students who might have one goal and speech to a student who might have low incidence or greater challenges, are they all going to be coming back in the same way? At most of our secondary schools, our students do spend time, and as they should be, in inclusion and included in the case counts for each of the classrooms. So if a student is able to access curriculum in English, they would mainstream. So we don't really have as many students that are in a classroom that would be not mainstreaming for the most of the day. So in the secondary schools, because of our commitment to wanting to make sure we have kids in the mainstream as much as possible, included in with peers, yes, they would have the same schedule, and they would be going into their classrooms as they have been virtually since the beginning of the semester and the school year. So, yeah, it's not a separate place. I know at our ATP, our Adult Transition Program, which is a slightly different program, I know that they have been doing appointments to work with the students and being able to provide them with small targeted instruction. And they actually started some of that this week. So as we can, we will.
That's great. I know we did have questions from families about mainstreaming and with the different conditions, both at the elementary and middle school and high school. But that is, as, as everybody here knows, a civil right for students with special needs and with their IEPs. So that's great. I would, I still think we have to have a conversation about meeting the needs of the students that should be in classes more. As brought up by one of our commenters, the preschool programs are still two days a week. I think there's still gaps that, especially as we're seeing these cases drop to really low levels where we could be cohorting in purple. Now we're not even going to be in purple, and there still have students that would typically be in a full wrap program for the majority of the week. There's not really access to their IEP services virtually. So I would really hope that we have some progress on that note to come back to at our next meeting. And then one thing about the intervention that we have set up, are the students that are invited to that intervention, are they invited to be at the school site for the other half of their day? That's their whole schedule?
Yes, I don't believe it's the entire day. I think it's a targeted like, and Mrs. Grabham could help me with this, but it's a it's a portion of the day. So it's not the full three hours because that would be quite a bit of intervention, but more of a group of about, and I believe it's about 90 minutes. And so we, as much as we can, we're trying to have that not be part of taking them away from their classroom teacher. Again, this is only just started, so I know there's still some transition. I am looking at the schedules. I know each of our principals is looking to make sure that we have students who are able to access our expanded enrichment programs to the greatest extent possible, intervention to the greatest extent possible, transportation, lunch and AB schedules along with all their siblings. So, you know, as we start this, we've really gone to the point where our principals are just doing a great job of, again, taking all of this complexity and finding the best answer for each and every student. And so that does, and unfortunately, we can't, we do the best we can. And as we learn more and as we move forward, we'll be able to adjust our schedules and see what we can best do with our interventions. We want to make sure our people are trained well, that we have the students receiving the maximum benefit from everything we're putting forward. So, you know, that's something, you know, if we thought a year ago that we would be able to teach for a year virtually and keep learning going in this way, there's many places in the world they have not been able to do that. So I know that our team is strategic and they are able to come up with new ideas. And as we come up with new ideas, we'll get even better at it and quickly, I think.
Yeah, just like you mentioned, though, thank you to all our admin who are stepping up to handle the logistical problems with that because that's, it's intricate. It's really, and maybe that is something that we should be thinking about when we come back after spring break, too, looking at how the attendance is for these programs to make sure that we're getting as much as we can out of the 36 teachers we hired to do this. So I appreciate all your work on the front end and I look forward to hearing more about that at the next meeting. So the only other thing is, does intervention, is that set up for our students that are at Surfside Educational Academy?
So as far as having a specific teacher assigned to Surfside Educational Academy, as far as those interventionists, we did not assign one because at the time of design, we wanted the interventionist to be focusing on in-person instruction. And Surfside by design is a virtual instruction model. So assigning an interventionist whose primary goal is to serve students in person didn't seem to align with the mission of either the intervention or of Surfside of being fully virtual. We also have our VSTs, our virtual support teachers, which are available and have been since the start of school year for intervention for all students and they are available. So our Surfside students could, will still have the opportunity to work with our virtual support teachers as well. So we're looking at that and seeing how we can maximize that support for them. But again, the intervention teachers were predominantly put forward for in-person instruction rather. And then the Surfside Academy was again a virtual program. So those two programs don't necessarily mesh. We figured it was, we felt that it was a better design to look at our virtual support teachers who are also teaching and providing interventions virtually.
Okay. And I've heard from some families at Surfside that it's been harder because they haven't felt as connected as they do at their traditional school site with like a yearbook and with the other things that they're not used to and that they're not seeing at the new site. So I know our admins are working hard at that, but anything that we can do as a district to remember that those students are also having a unique experience and that that we can't lose sight of the ones that we promised we were investing in their education, too, for the year. Anything we can do to continue thinking about that as well, we're juggling all the other balls that we're moving forward, that'd be great. I I've lost my train of where I was asking, so I'm gonna, I'm all good. Thank you so much for indulging.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric. Great questions. So I'm going to take take a 10 minute break because we've been in our chair since five o'clock. So it is 7:58. I'll just say it's eight o'clock. We're going to re-adjourn at 8:10. You guys got that? All right, so let's take a biology break. Thank. All right, welcome back, everyone. It's 8:10. We are going to get started with the rest of our agenda. Thanks for hanging in there. We are now on item 8A. It's approval of, sorry, 9A. I just said that. 9A ratification of Adenia to memorandum of understanding for expanded enrichment programs for the 2020-21 school year. I'll turn it over to staff.
Good evening, Board. Yes, this ratification is our opportunity to expand our programs for our expanded learning program, which provides additional childcare for our students during the pandemic. We have exhausted the grant funding that we have typically every year. And now we are working with our partners to expand. Our partners have been fantastic with us. They have been navigating the rules just like we have. They have been implementing safety measures. They have been supporting student learning and providing them. So really want to thank our group of providers for all that they have done. And I'm happy to announce that, starting on the 15th, we will have over 821 students enrolled in the programs every single, you know, day that we're offering them and that we fully expect to expand that as we do find more rooms available and we are able to hire more staff. So it's very good news.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
No.
Do we have AM PM offerings at all sites?
We do, yes. That's one of the ways that we were able to expand our learning. So students who are in the morning sessions in the elementary school would have extended expanded learning programs in the afternoon. And then those who have afternoon teaching program will have it in the morning. So that was one of the ways that we're able to expand our offerings.
Is some of the COVID relief money expected to cover these costs or where where have those been covered?
We funded, yes.
Okay.
All right. No further motion, no further discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll second the motion.
We have a first and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Moving on to 9B, ratification of agreement to operate the secondary learning centers at Oceanside and El Camino High Schools.
Yeah, so this is again the same type of item for the board. It is COVID relief funded and an opportunity to provide a safe, secure environment for our secondary scholars to work within, along with internet stability and an adult supervisor. And so approval of this will again let us continue with these important services for the rest of the year.
How many students do we have on the waitlist, both at the secondary and the elementary levels?
The waitlist constantly is open, so we do have a constantly opening. A week ago, we had around 200. Right now, we're about 80. And for example, at one of the school sites, I talked to the principal. She was able to identify a new classroom that she's able to open to exhaust her current waitlist of 12 students once our provider is able to hire and do a background check on the adult supervisor for that place. So we're constantly looking for that, including finding places using the tents that we've bought and other things. So we know as more businesses open, more people need the service. So our waitlist continues to expand.
And the secondary learning centers, they're not with a certificated teacher there. It's just like a safe space for them to come and do what they need to do to take care of their class stuff?
That's correct.
Okay, I just want to clear, just make sure like it's clear what we're offering. Okay. And during that time, they could access the virtual support teachers, I assume, too?
That is correct, yes.
Great questions. I will entertain a motion.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
We have a first and second? All in favor of approving? Item 9B.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Stay with me. 9C, ratification of memorandum of understanding with Vista Community Clinic for the A-plus teeth dental screening program.
Yes, Board, this is an exciting opportunity to deepen our partnership with Vista Community Clinics by providing dental health screenings for our students at their school sites to ensure that our students' teeth remain healthy and that they are able to have the dental care that they need. Very exciting and ratification of this memorandum of understanding will allow us to partner with them so our students receive the health services or dental services that they need.
Good question. Did I read this right or I thought I read where it said we we were able to service three schools last year and this year we're like 15 or so? Is there an expect a radical jump in their funding or capabilities? Or is it just because of COVID, they weren't able to last year really do those and now they can everywhere?
I believe that there was some limits on it because, again, COVID, I think that's what Dr. Sparks has told me. And the ratification is that, again, it used to be just three schools, but now they want to increase it to all of our schools.
Okay, great. Good news.
I'll make a motion to accept. But first, do I have a second?
Second.
I I just want to, this is tremendous. This is wonderful. We serve a lot of communities that are underserved in in both the health arena, access to healthcare. It affects our students on a daily basis, right? If they have healthy teeth, they're healthier, they better learn. I I I look forward to continuing to expand this kind of offerings at our schools. Community schools is a big initiative that's put forward by the state and by the federal government that comes with a lot of funding that connects our students and communities to these types of services more robustly through their school. And so I I think as a board, I would love to see us looking into that, too, in the future. And this is a great first step for our students' health.
I I echo that, what Eric says, and I know Vista Community Clinic is is probably one of those that have been our main medical partner that I know of over the years. And I'd like to see us encourage them to bring us along with them on the experiment, particularly in our in our neighborhoods that are that are challenged, like the Backgate and others that the clinic's already in. And, you know, I'm ready to support more efforts out there myself, Eric.
Thank you. I know Dr. Vitali has been a great advocate with Vista Community Clinic, building that relationship and really ensuring that our students receive as many services in Oceanside. And it's her work with them has been really instrumental in receiving more services in our community.
All right. Did we do the, we didn't have it for this one? Yeah, my wait, we haven't done that yet. Do I have a, I'll make a motion.
We have two.
We have two, okay. I can call for the vote now. Sorry, you're losing me. All right. Call for the vote to approve item 9C. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Moving on to 11A, presentation approval of the second interim financial report for the 2021 and resolution number 27, identifying the amount of budget reductions needed in 2021, 22 and 2022, 23, and authorizing reductions. Wow, that was a mouthful. All right, staff.
Thank you. Good evening, President Begin, Trustees, Dr. Vitali and Executive Cabinet. The second interim financial report for the 2020-2021 school year represents the financial status of the district as of January 31, 2021. School districts are required to submit the second interim financial report to the County Office of Education by March 15. It shows actual revenue and expenditures to date, budget revisions, projected ending balances and multi-year projections, as well as average daily attendance and cash flow projections. Tonight, the Director of Fiscal Services, Tim Golden, will be presenting the second interim financial report. Tim?
Thanks, Dr. Norman, and good evening, Trustees of the Board and Dr. Vitali. Tonight, we will go over our second interim financial report. Next slide, please. So this is just an outline of the presentation tonight. At a very high level here, we're looking at any budget changes from our last report, which would have been the first interim. So our changes from November 1st to January 34th, but we can go ahead to the next slide. So just as a reminder, at first interim, we did have a budget certification as qualified. So we are, we're operating under the qualified status. But moving forward, we'll go to the next slide to get into the detail. So this is a general fund comparison here and it's just kind of tracking the reporting timeline. So we've brought the adopted budget here and the amounts are outlined right there. The first interim numbers are shown in that middle column and the second interim numbers are going to be in that final column there with the difference between the second interim and our first interim in that far right column. So you'll see what those changes are, what those numbers are. And we'll get into the details of those specific numbers on the following slides. Next slide, please. So on the revenue changes here, we had a decrease in LCFF revenue of about 700,000. And that is largely due to our unduplicated pupil count drop. So we did have a hold harmless for ADA. So that was held harmless, but the unduplicated pupil count, which is going to affect our supplemental and concentration grant funding under LCFF, that did see a decrease this year. And and many districts were experiencing the same thing because our nutrition program did receive a waiver this year for free and reduced meals. So there wasn't as much of an incentive incentive for parents to submit those meal applications, which in turn affects this this number. The second item there is the federal changes. So that's going to come from some reductions in our Medicare and also some of our title programs. So Title 1 through 4, so a little bit of decreased allocations there that we got in January. Slight increases to our mental health, state funding, and then some changes in our donations and grants as some money came in on the revenue side there. Next slide, one more. There we go. The largest changes that we'll see here on the expenditure side. And this is going to be as a result of some reductions in our sub-budgets as well as unfilled vacancies. So as we're cleaning up our budgets, as we're trying to fill positions that were vacant during these times, as we don't fill those positions or we're not able to fill those positions, we recognize some vacancy savings. And and then in reconciliation of some of those positions, we will notice some reductions in those positions. So largely due to the certificated and classified salaries there, it's mainly just the vacancy cleanup and savings that we'll see. Likewise, in the books and supplies line item here, when we received our CARES funding, most of these budgets were placed into the supplies and benefit, are the supplies and books line items. And as we identified needs and we moved things around, most of these transactions, you'll notice between books and supplies, move into the services and operating line right below it. So a couple of those items that were outlined were increases in CARES programs that you just heard with those after-school programs. So those items, we transferred budget lines from books and supplies over into services and operating as well. Another item that we outlined there was the computer and iPad leases. And then just a slight change in our capital outlay and other outgo. That's primarily indirect costs, not as much capital outlay, but those are just locked on to that same item. And the and the final change in all of these expenditure budgets was a reduction of 5.3 million that you see there on that bottom line. Next slide, please. So we'll review here the changes from the ending fund balance. So these are the components that you'll see here on the left-hand side that we had at first interim. And and then on the middle column there, we have our second interim assignments as we've identified some different needs. We will notice the prioritization of spending those restricted dollars as you see in the difference column there of our restricted line item that we have a smaller balance there because we've tried to prioritize those those items in our restricted budgets. And then some slight changes on a couple of those line items, but then understanding the importance of our maintenance department, including some of those assignments there at the bottom. One of the things to outline here is that there is some potential HVAC funding that is coming through the legislation. assignments there at the bottom. One of the things to outline here is that there is some potential HVAC funding that is coming through the legislation. A D Assembly Bill eight forty one offers the opportunity to apply for some funding to aid districts in some of these items, as well as our S R two funding, which is coming from the December covid relief stimulus package that was signed. As you may or may not know, there is a a third wave that is making its way through right now, so there could be some additional potential funding on the horizon. But we don't quite know what that will look like at this point, but this is kind of a snapshot of what the changes are in that ending fund balance. But as we go to the next slide, we'll review our multi-year projection or M Y P. And here are some of the assumptions that we made with our multi-year projection. One of the things that is not an assumption on this is the declining enrollment for the current year, twenty 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 one. Now, this isn't impacting our funding in our current year because we have the ADA hold harmless. But just to outline some of those funding drops, this number is taken at the beginning of October, and this is a metric that's taken every year a- at that same time. So these numbers are reflected as of C beds day, which is the beginning of November or of October. But some of those drops that I just want to highlight was arcade five range was a drop in six hundred and sixty eight students where the six to eight range was a drop in a hundred and fifty nine students. But our nine to twelve was only a drop of twenty three students with the largest drops in enrollment here in kindergarten and in second grade with two hundred and thirty enrollment decreases there and two oh five respectively. So that's two thirty drop in kindergarten and two oh five in second grade. But we're continuing to evaluate these trends. We do know this is obviously a unique year, so we will be looking to update that four hundred and ten decrease in enrollment in future years. We're going to be reviewing that so that third interim, we might have an updated number based on a a little bit more intense analysis of those numbers. Next slide, please. So the multi-year projection listed here is going to show us the current year, our second year, and then the third year forecasted. And we're going to be removing any one-time funding as well as any restricted balances that are and restricted programs that are expiring. So you'll notice here in the current year, we won't have any additional expenditures to to meet our five percent reserve and or other components of the ending fund balance. But once we get into that third year, we'll still have the seven point eight million dollars that we're going to have to look towards addressing. And a lot of districts are having trouble in that third year because that's when districts are starting to see the effect of their enrollment changes from this current year because we do get a hold harmless this year. Next year, we get the benefit of using either the higher ADA of the current year or the prior, so we still are kind of utilizing that umbrella, but in that third year is where we don't really have that umbrella, so some of these numbers might look different than what you may have seen at first interim, some of the revenue numbers because the governor has come out with a projected COLA of three point eight four percent for next year. And at first interim, we were projecting a zero percent because that was the best information that we had at that time, but state revenues have been up. So this is an outline here of what the M Y P or multi-year projection is going to see, but what I want us to focus on is that third years where we have those reductions that we would need in order to make that five percent board reserve. Next slide, please. So on this slide here, we're looking at the components of the ending fund balance for the multi-year projection. And as we look in year three, twenty twenty two, twenty three, there are no assignments remaining, meaning that we actually don't have the funding available to fund any of those assignments. So I just wanted to outline that as well as that our ending fund balance as projected would only be four point four million, which outlines that we would need to make some additional reductions to meet our five percent reserve because we would need at least eleven point two million on that reserve line in year three, but we would only have four point four million available, so. Next slide, please. Moving into the fiscal stabilization plan, so this would be identifying potentially some of those needs and those for reductions. In here, we're continuing to try to align our staffing with the declining enrollment. Obviously, this year it has been one for the record books, but we're trying to look at all the statistics with how we can best assess all the information and apply that with staffing with ongoing expenditure reductions. And then additionally evaluating consolidation of the school facilities to meet the capacity outlined with our students. Moving forward into the next slide, we're looking at the next steps, and I believe Andy was going to take it from from here.
Thank you so much, Tim. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the second interim financial report for the twenty 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 one school years presented and certify the district's financial obligations for the current year and for the subsequent two fiscal years. And then it is also further recommended that the Board adopt resolution number twenty seven, authorizing and identifying the amount of budget reductions needed in the twenty twenty one to twenty two and twenty to twenty two to twenty twenty three as presented. A few twentys there.
Do we have any questions for staff?
I have a couple of questions. What is our percentage of unduplicated now? You said there was a big decrease that total of loss of seven hundred thousand dollars. What was the percentage drop from last year to this year?
So we dropped one thousand seventy eight this year, and the unduplicated pupil percentage is actually calculated on a three-year rolling average. So our drop this year, it was less than a percent in total, but it might have a compounding effect since it is that three-year total, so. I believe it is right around sixty three percent in terms of what our unduplicated pupil percentage is for the district.
And is that, you said a lot of that had to do with the fact that we were providing meals, so so students didn't and families didn't have to apply for free reduced lunch. And there was another, was the, I'm sorry, this is racking my brain because we had conversation about this in the past. Was there another form that parents could fill out? Looking ahead, how can we make sure that we're not losing kids that we're actually serving that may qualify for this, but we didn't get counted this year?
So there is an additional form and it depends on, it gets very particular into that where it depends on the school type, what is being offered there. So some schools are under a community eligibility provision or a provision two. And at different school sites in different years, they might need an alternative income form. And some schools are allowed to do that based on that provision. Other schools would need to have the actual meal application form submitted, and this is something that many school districts were trying to push on the legislature and advocate for is that it it really, since we didn't get the hold harmless on this, a lot of districts saw drops in these percentages. And you know, it's going to affect their their supplemental and concentration grant funding, so there there are forms, that alternative in- income form, but it just depends on even at that point, parents aren't necessarily that motivated because they don't need to do it because they're already receiving the benefit and even with us, you know, pushing forth, trying to get that information. There's no guarantee that we're going to get any response, but I know I know our nutrition team was pushing hard at the end.
Yeah, you're highlighting a a really difficult communication job, but it's obviously critical to the future moving forward. So I know we'll continue to work on that for next year. I'm really excited to hear about the HVAC funding. I know we have lots of sites that even even ones that were touched by remodels in in recent years. HVAC is something that will keep our kids healthy, and we've learned a lot about disease this year, more than we'll than we ever wanted to, but really healthy HVAC systems and and airflow in all of our schools is really exciting to hear about that funding. And then that big drop on the K to second grade. I guess this item is not the best time to talk about that, but I think we as a board need to talk about how we're going to recapture our students that that we know had a lot of trouble with learning virtually and K through second grade.
Yeah, I I I agree with you with that, Eric, but that's a a different conversation. I, Tim, just just correct me if I'm wrong here, but if I'm not mistaken, I mean, the third year, these multi-year projections, year after year, quarter after quarter, are always twenty million, thirty million. How are we ever going to fill that number? And it's, you know, all this magical stuff. But this year, if I was reading that right, it's only a million lots of money and things in there that in whole houses and stuff that's making making that look better than I've ever seen before. Am I mistaken in that? That that big third year number seems pretty light compared to previous years. Yeah, so I just wanted to acknowledge that if that was in fact true, and so something there is going right. I mean, from from all the other ones we've ever had, it was like, how the heck you ever going to do that number? And two years later, you figure it out, but that's just the way of the state's magical funding system, but I'm not saying we need to rely on it, but that's but that's the math we're given, but that was surprising. I'm supportive of of adoption, this adopting this interim report as recommended by staff.
Did you make a motion? Was that a motion?
I did, yeah. Sorry, I did. I tried to anyway. If I get a second.
Okay, I'll give you a second.
We have a first and a second to accept the second interim financial report and the resolution number twenty seven. Any further discussion, board members?
I'm in favor of the charitable second.
All in, all in favor? Passes five oh. Thank you for your patience. All right, now we're on item eleven B.
Thank you.
Dr. Norman, did you want to talk a little bit about this?
Yes, I have a, I have a opening for you. For more than eighteen months, the Oceanside Unified School District has pursued the required process for sale of the former Pacifica Elementary School property. Pacifica was reviewed by the District's Facility Advisory Seven Eleven Committee on May thirteenth, twenty nineteen, June eighteenth, twenty nineteen, August fourteenth, twenty nineteen, and a public hearing was held on September eighteenth, twenty nineteen to receive community comments and feedback. Pacifica was then declared surplus property on October sixteenth, twenty nineteen. The Board then offered Pacifica for sale to nonprofit and public entities, including the City of Oceanside, the County of San Diego, and various park and recreation districts, but received no interest. The Board also recently authorized the submission of a waiver of certain education code public bidding requirements to maximize the value of the property and help ensure that any sale is in the best interest of the district and its students. Since that time, district staff has requested and reviewed all other proposals to purchase the property and has presented the top proposals for review and consideration by the Board, requesting that a single best offer be selected by the Board so staff can move forward with negotiating specific terms of the sale through an initial letter of intent. Once the Board has selected its preferred offer, district staff requests Board authorization to negotiate a letter of intent with the chosen buyer in order to solidify the terms of the sale. District staff also requests authorization to negotiate a purchase and sale agreement, which will be brought back to the final for final Board approval at a subsequent meeting. It is recommended that the Board of Education review and consider the offers provided for the Pacifica property and select a top offer, authorizing staff to negotiate the terms of the letter of intent, as well as a purchase and sale agreement to be brought back for final Board approval at a later meeting.
The Board will review the top proposals as collected and analyzed by the district staff, legal counsel, and brokers. These proposals have been identified as the offers that are most advantageous to the district based on offer price and other factors. The top offers recommended by staff are as follows. Wilmington, fifteen million, two hundred dollars. D R Horton, fifteen million fifty dollars, sorry, I'm looking at that, fifty thousand, sorry. Meritage, fourteen million, eight hundred dollars. The Board engaged in a thorough discussion on in our closed agenda in our closed session, agenda item one D, reviewing each offer in detail. Right now, we can take public comment. Are there any public comments on this item?
No, there isn't.
All right, we have no public comments. So we are on the, the Board has considered the offers provided for the Pacifica property and selects the offer from D R Horton of fifteen million, fifty thousand dollars, which we believe is the most advantageous for the district. District staff, legal counsel, and broker are authorized and directed to negotiate a letter of intent with D R Horton, formalizing the terms of sale for property to be followed by negotiation of a purchase and sale agreement. The Board will review and consider a purchase and sale agreement negotiated between the parties at a later Board meeting. Do I have a motion to authorize negotiation of an L O I and subsequent purchase and sale agreement with D R Horton for the Pacifica property?
I still move?
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and a second. All right, I'll call vote. All those in favor of eleven B?
Hi.
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 Motion carries five oh. Is there any more you need, Dr. Norman?
No, we can go on to the next item when you're ready.
I do want to thank Sarah and Jeff for taking the time to go over all of this information with our board.
And I want to thank you guys too, and thank the Board members and then thank the support staff there, Jeff and Sarah. Appreciate it tremendously. Great work. And you have more to do.
What's our expected timeline or what what is a typical timeline, I guess, for this kind of negotiation to come back with the final proposal?
Um, so it can take a couple of months. We will start to engage with D R Horton and to look at the terms that they've already proposed on their L O I and then respond and kind of get to a comfortable place with the letter of intent. And then I would, I would anticipate at least another thirty days to get the PSA in place, so we should be back in the next couple of months with the PSA, I would guess.
Thank you.
And then from there, they would be clear to move forward and apply to the city under the terms of the L O I and the purchase and sale agreement. And that would be take maybe a couple, two years, three to get through the city process optimistically. Would that be about correct?
Correct.
Anyway.
Yeah, they would have a, I think there was a sixty-day due diligence. And then, yeah, it would take about twenty-four months for them to get through the approval process at City of Oceanside.
That's, that's what I think Eric was.
Yeah, well, I both just the, it would come back to us again for a vote on the final purchase and sale agreement, and then it would go to the city side process where they would engage with the city and all the requirements that they have to work with neighborhoods and all that side of things.
Correct. Correct. Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks for help. We're moving on to item eleven C. Ratification of expenditures by the Special Education Department for non-public school contracts, non-public agency contracts, Memoranda of Understanding and Independent Contractor Agreements for the twenty 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 one fiscal year.
Thank you, President Begin. Each year, the Oceanside Unified School District enters into agreements with non-public schools, non-public agencies, public agencies such as neighboring school districts, as well as independent contractors to provide services for our students receiving special education. Services are determined for students through the individualized education plan process. The master contract agreements and all current related expenditures for the non-public schools and non-public agencies have already been board approved. In addition, the current expenditures related to public agencies and independent contractors have also been board approved. Item eleven C summarizes the Item eleven C summarizes the total projected costs for all of these agencies for the twenty twenty, twenty, twenty-one school year. The projected costs are traditionally approved at the beginning of the school year and will be done so moving forward. The amounts indicated for each master contract memorandum of understanding and independent contractor agreement are projected costs in the event the services are needed for an OUSD student. If no students require the services of that agency, then there is no expense to the district. These projected costs are based on the twenty nineteen, twenty, twenty school year and are subject to change depending on the needs of our students. It is recommended the Board of Education ratify the projected costs for the master contracts memorandum of understanding and independent contractor agreements in the amount of six million, five hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred seventy-five dollars.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for staff?
Yes, do we typically play, uh, pay almost seven hundred thousand dollars to NICSIE? Is that our, is that how the, um, I'm on the trustee review committee, so I should know this stuff, but, uh, we partial, part of our apportionment from students with special needs goes to NICSIE. Is that what that is, uh, is that chunk of money? That indicator, is that separate?
Dr. Lovey, did you want to speak to that?
Yes, I believe this is all inclusive of every contract that we execute between all of our partners. So NICSIE does receive a portion of that. So we basically went through every single, um, contract and payment and memorandum of understanding and found the amounts that we pay. Um, in some instances, those amounts may be projected amounts and not actual amounts. Um, so we're going to be with our new director of special education, be, and Dr. Norman, we're going to be watching very carefully to, uh, rectify and balance out how much did we say and believe and project that we will be paying versus how much did we actually pay? So you'll see another, uh, report coming forwards. You'll be able to see that.
Just because that's such a large, uh, piece of this expenditure, uh, we are required to be part of NICSIE as our consortium of special education. Is that correct?
That's correct because we're not operating as a standalone SELPA.
And to do so. Sorry.
No, it's okay. I was going to say that to do so as a standalone sample, we'd have to have, I think it's somewhere in the range of thirty thousand students, which we don't. Uh, so the state wouldn't even allow us to do that on our own if we wanted to.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure of the exact number, Mr. Joyce. Um, I have worked in a district that was a standalone SELPA. Um, I don't believe it's necessarily in the best interest of a district our size to be a standalone SELPA because of the fact that, um, by partnering with other districts through the SELPA, we can each specialize with particular services to the students within the region and provide a higher quality program for the students in general. Um, in that district, even when we were our own SELPA, if we had a student, for example, we did not have, uh, a deaf and hard of hearing program. Even though we were owned SELPA, we still ended up having to go to an outside agency to provide services to that student versus if we had been in a SELPA that was had more students and larger, it would have been part of that fee that you're identifying.
And then one of the big things that our SELPA does is they help, uh, gather community voice and input so that they can better serve our students with special needs and our families with students who have special needs. So I'm just going to take the second to tell everybody to check out NICSIE. Uh, they, you know, we are paying this amount of money so that our students can access their services and their families can have access to those services. So, thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Question I have, um, it was, um, I was, it started interrupting you, Derek, but I was going to say is, is the NICSIE fee there, is that like a percentage of like our total annual, um, I, I E Ps of this, of this number? Is that, is that how it's accomplished? I don't remember.
This is.
That, rather?
To get the totals is what we've already spent so far and what we're anticipating that we're going to need to spend to get to the end of the year.
Yeah, no, I get that. That's the sixty-five million. Um, and I've never seen us present that way to us before. Um, as a total in the, at the, towards the end of the year or towards the end of the year, I've never seen it staff presented as a, as a budget number. We, we approve these periodically throughout the year, meeting to meeting, we approve ten contracts or whatever with agencies or the not to exceed amount or what if amount, you know, in case they get students, but this is the rate and we just want to have that provider available, right? So you guys have taken, everything has been approved this year, put it in one package and saying we're re-ratifying essentially this sixty-five million dollars that we have committed up to, to spend this fiscal year. Is that correct?
Right. What, what, really what we want to be doing at the beginning of every school year is making sure that we have the NTE amounts or the projected costs, um, so that what we do when we do approve the contracts and we approve the rates, those really need to be tied to your board approval that we are spending a certain amount, up to a certain amount. Typically, it's only to fifty thousand dollars or above, but because we were bringing so many agencies to you, we wanted to give you the whole picture all at once. Cause if you look under the specialized services, you'll see none of those are for up to fifty thousand. Those don't require, uh, board approval, but we wanted to make sure you had the whole picture of the services we were providing.
Okay. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve a second. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the ratification of expenditures?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh.
Thank you.
Now we're on item twelve A, approval of revisions to board bylaws nine, three, two, zero.
Yes, as we've stated in previous meetings, we're going to continue to bring you, uh, policy updates. And this one is regarding, uh, meeting, meetings and notices, and it updates us with, uh, current recommendations from CSBA per education code and also best practices.
Any questions? For staff?
Does this, uh, does this include a way that the public can be notified of an upcoming meeting? In the policy? Or is that one of the best practices? I don't know. I guess of like a special meeting. What, what are our requirements for posting if we have a special meeting? I guess what I'm asking. Sorry, this is a little bit of a surprise. I, I can bring it up next time. Now, I'll bring it up. I, I'll look through it and, and bring it up next time if I have questions about the policy. Thank you.
It seems, seems pretty procedurally accurate with what we need to be doing, best practices today. And it does streamline the situation where about one hour notice and that in extreme emergencies and stuff. So it seems like we need to do it, but, um, you can chase it down some more later. That'd be cool. I'd support the motion, approve the policy.
I'll make a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. So now we're on item thirteen, public comments. I believe we have three public comments. I'll just do a friendly reminder. You have three minutes. Adhere to the timelines and who is our first?
Chris Duval, Todd Madison, and then Matt Mathis.
All right, so Chris Duval, you're up. Hello, Chris.
Hi. All right, hold on, let me get this. All right, good evening, board members. Dr. Vitale, I'm Chris Duval.
I'm Angelica Rodriguez.
And we have Principal Diana here with us today, and we are from Palomar Family Counseling Service. And we are here to talk about our Prevention and Early Intervention Grant that's funded by the county of San Diego. Well, wait, Ms. Chris, I, I'm a little confused. Everyone looks really engaged. They don't look bored at all. Oh, no, Diana, it's not that kind of a board. Remember, we're at the Oceanside School District Board meeting with the superintendent and the, the board president. Wow, that, that sounds, that sounds really important. And I think I saw Mr. McAtier. I think, do you think he remembers me, Ms. Chris? He's actually Dr. McAtier right now. And it was, uh, you're bringing up a great point because Dr. McAtier, along with other administrators and teachers, were pivotal in us piloting our program at Laurel and Mission thirteen years ago. Wow, we've really been doing this a long time. Yes, we have been doing this a long time, and with the current support of the principals from Mission, Laurel, Libby, and San Luis Rey, we are continuing to be successful. And I actually, I really love working with the teachers. Yeah, so Diana, why don't you share what you do? Okay, I'm the principal of Dinosaur School, and I go into the classroom and small groups with children preschool to third grade. And at some of our sites, we're going to go to the fourth and fifth grade. Right, so Diana teaches a social, emotional, evidence-based curriculum from incredible years. Okay, that's a lot of big words. I just feel like I go in and talk to my friends and teach them how to listen, follow rules, and calm down. Right now, we're virtual, and I even have my own dinosaur school YouTube channel, Dino School, one, two, three, four. I never thought I'd be on YouTube. Yeah, maybe it's her, Diana.
Yeah, let me tell them what we do for the parents. We do a parenting class. It's a twelve-week course covering topics on positive parenting. Some of the topics we cover are importance of parental attention, setting limits, rules, consequences, and supporting academic habits at home. We have been doing some, uh, monthly game nights with the families because we felt it was important to, uh, engage the families during this time. During, uh, January, we play Loteria. In February, we play Bingo. And in the month of March, we will have fun screening celebration.
It should be excellent.
The feedback from the families have been very positive, so we will continue doing this with the families. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I just want to say Huxley loved the last bingo. It was so much, well, both of them, but he got really excited to go to this last one. So thank you. We really did.
Yeah, a hundred and six people register. Yeah, we had a hundred and six people register. Diana made a showing too.
Cool. Thank you for sharing. All right, so our next speaker is Todd Madison.
All right, that was great. That was great. Unfortunately, though, in general, I think the pandemic has exposed more of the disregard our school district has for the views of its parents, as fun as that was. We saw last spring, almost a year ago, the district took the last poll ever, asking whether parents wanted their kids back in full-time school. The answer was a clear majority. Only fifteen percent wanted distance learning, but that was ignored over and over again throughout the summer, fall, and winter. Parents see this, they understand this, and they're voting with their kids. Enrollment is down all over. We just saw those numbers in the financial reporting. It doesn't look good. We'll see how that works out, as Mike said, but, it's not looking good right now. Continue to adjust staffing for declining enrollment, as we saw in the financials, as corporate speak for layoffs ahead if something doesn't happen. And this is despite the fact that any parent knows changing schools is difficult. It seems everyone has a say in where your child is educated, except you. What if California had real school choice? What if the default was to allow parents to make that decision rather than deny them that right? I chose OUSD for my kids, and I would do that again. We have great teachers and staff. You all know I've spent years trying to make our schools better, but I'm not so conceited that I think my opinion should dictate what other parents do for their kids. My family is fortunate, lucky, and lucky. We have choices available to us that other families don't have. But luck shouldn't determine whether a child gets the education their parents want for them. Parents from less fortunate families deserve the same choices we had. We have an opportunity now like no other that has ever existed or will exist in our lifetimes. More parents than ever can see how our traditional system doesn't always put their kids first and understand there are other options out there. California School of Choice Initiative would establish education savings accounts for all kids, no discrimination, and credit them with their share of Prop ninety-eight school funding. That would be used toward tuition at any accredited school. Traditional public school and charters would continue to be totally free, no change there. And if a parent feels private school is best, this year, parents would get twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars credited toward that, meaning any balance due, if any, would be small. For those who agree inequity is a problem, how could you address that any better than by enabling low-income families to attend quality schools that are currently reserved for the well-to-do? Does anyone here really support locking low-income families out of schools they feel are best based on nothing more than the money they have? Seems a little elitist. For homeschooling, parents with lower cost unused credit would accumulate to be used towards college or vocational training, which would be a hundred thousand dollars or more. Imagine having that for your kid's college. People who think now is the time to support common sense school choice should go to Californiaschoolchoice.org, that's dot org, and sign the petition there. There'll be a link on the Oceanside Parents Facebook page as well, if you'd rather just quick click that. And so you know, I'm the San Diego County Chair for this effort. If you'd like to volunteer to help spread the word, I would love to have you on the team. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Todd. And we have one more speaker tonight. Matt. Mathis. Hi, Matt.
Hi, everybody. Good night. How's it, uh, how's it going? So, uh, full disclosure, I'm, we're the fire department. I'm on shift, so if we get a call, I'm going to have to go. But, um, so my name's Matt Mathis, some of, uh, fire captain with the City Riverside Fire Department, been serving the public for, um, just over eighteen years. Also the union vice president for our local and the, uh, vice chair of the City of Oceanside, um, Measure X Citizens Oversight Committee. So pretty involved with trying to get more involved with the community, heavily involved with my community and my local and, um, just understanding the process a little bit more. So haven't met many of you personally, looking forward to as soon as we can meet in person and in public, get to know more of you better. But I just wanted to say after hitting the fourth hour of tonight, I really appreciate your commitment to serving the community, serving our kids, our, the students, and the future. I know sometimes it can be a selfless task, um, but all of you being willing to do that and put in the hours you are. Uh, it's not always the most appreciated, but thank you, guys. What I did want to ask you about was, um, my son Hartford is four. He's going to be going into hopefully the TK program. We've been in communication with the, um, Director of the Preschool Program, Ms. Reed, and trying to talk to her about the age and cutoff for registration. Right now, because of the closures, it sounds like there's been a dendum that's been allowed to extend the age for registering for the TK, which has been great, and we're really excited to have that opportunity. He would turn five on August thirtieth, and then the school cutoff registration would be September second. So he would have been five and two days at the cutoff and be the youngest one in the class after being isolated for the past year. So it would obviously put us in a little bit of a rough, uh, position. Getting communication back from the, the preschool program director, sounds like they're going to give some, um, extension on that date, allow us to keep him in a TK program instead of the kindergarten. But what my question is, looking out to the future, how is that? How is that option going to play out in the future? Will he be able to continue in now into a kindergarten track and then first grade? Or after this year, is it going to go back to the previous dates and now by default, he would go into the first grade? Been a huge supporter of public schools. I understand that all the different options, charters, public, private, homeschool, all have their place. But, you know, being, being the background I come from and supporting the public school and the locals and, uh, the workforce, it's always been near and dear to my heart to make sure that we're providing and supporting what the public school system needs for the community. So would like to keep our kid in that track, looking forward to it. And again, just want to say thanks to you guys all for your commitment and your willingness to serve and to put in the long hours to do what's best for our kids.
Thank you, Matt, um, for sharing that. Um, someone from our staff, um, our superintendent is right here, Dr. Vitale. So I'm sure someone from our staff will reach out and help you with your questions about the cutoff date.
Yes, we will have someone from staff reach out.
Perfect. Thank you. So that, that concludes our public comment tonight. So we are now on the last item, item fourteen. Board staff discussion. We have one item, A, election of twenty twenty-one CSBA Region Seventeen Delegate Assembly candidates.
Uh, yes, board. So we are able to su- submit one ballot, uh, for our Board of Education for the Delegate Assembly for Region Seventeen through the California School Board Association. There are eight people on the ballot, and we can submit at up to seven people. Again, we can submit one ballot. So I will, there, please tell me who we would like to nominate.
I have no horse in this race. How about it?
I've, I've had the pleasure to collaborate with, um, some of the members of that list. So I, I would like to nominate if the board accepts, uh, Katrina Young, uh, the San Diego School District, and Kate Bishop. Both have seen take up leadership right out the gate in their first term. Uh, so I, I would look forward to them having an impact on the organization of CSBA as a whole. That would be my recommendation. That would be my recommendation.
Okay, so Kate Bishop and Katrina Young are two nominations from Eric. Eleanor?
I would like to nominate Andrew Hayes, who is an incumbent, Barbara Ryan, who's an incumbent, as well as the fact that she's worked, um, with COVID nineteen through, um, Ready Hospital, Children's Hospital. Okay, you are a nominee, Lucy Ugarte, right?
I didn't say Lucia Ugarte, but she is also, yes, I would co-nominate with you.
Okay. And Dawn Perfect, who's CIF, um, for the region representative on the CSBA board. And, um, a new person, Melissa, and I cannot pronounce her last name. Yo. K I U. Would you just repeat it, please?
I would pronounce it Crow.
Crow?
Yeah, that's a total of seven.
Right, yeah, she's way out in the Boondocks, um, Borrego Springs. And we need, we need to bring folks in. And she's on a, I believe she's, it's connected to a reservation. Okay.
So we have, uh, seven of eight. Raquel, I don't believe you have any, uh, nominations. Is that correct? Okay, so Kate Bishop, Andrew Hayes, Melissa Crowe, Dawn Perfect, Barbara Ryan, Lucy Ugarte, and Katrina.
I'll make a motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion.
If a first and a second? All in favor of those seven delegates?
Aye.
Aye.
It's a big year for advocating, so go get them CSB reps.
Yeah.
Uh, there's a couple of things.
Go ahead.
During our, it's our board discussion time, so, uh, I know this is gonna take everybody's blood pressure to the roof, that time of the meeting again. Um, our case rates are, like, they fell off a cliff coming into the last couple of weeks. If the trend continues and we really are coming on the other side of it, um, I think we should at our next meeting be speaking about, uh, what would trigger a return to our students coming back in full day? I know it seems crazy because we haven't even started the half-days yet. And I know it seems like fast, but we should definitely be prepared to do that when it's safe. And I think we've, we've talked about that, uh, from the beginning. Uh, we didn't talk about it tonight in the presentation, but knowing that if the conditions come and that the conditions are appropriate, also knowing that, uh, by mid-April, everyone should have had the opportunity to get vaccinated. Not everyone, because there are very specific circumstances for some people, but the vast majority of our staff members, uh, all educational staff members through the district should have a chance to have been double vaccinated and through their two weeks. Uh, so that plus a mask is is extremely safe space to be in as a staff member. Um, so I, I just asked that, uh, I would ask consensus up on the board, I guess, that we have something that discusses when we are coming back to a full return at our next meeting, or at least to have that as part of our discussion and our COVID update. Does the board entertain that as a reasonable?
Yeah, the COVID update provides us that opportunity at every meeting to, to talk about that. And, yeah, the trends are good. I'm excited. I want life to return to normal.
I'm very excited.
I'm excited too. I just don't want it to be signalized out there that we're, next month, we're gonna be discussing coming back full-time. And that that's a big debate that we're gonna have. To me, the big issue is gonna be distance. Because otherwise, we have no facilities to be able to handle it without doing crazy gymnastic stuff like putting, you know, elementary kids at middle schools and blah, 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 that shit they were talking about last year. Excuse my French. But the, um, the real issue is gonna be the distancing, uh, the four feet versus six. And so that's the question, and, and I, I hope that all the medicine and everything comes in and everybody's safe in that way, and that the science then begins to say six feet isn't necessary, four feet can work, three feet is it, and then we don't have a problem. And then we're like, open up.
Exactly what I'm, that's exactly what I'm thinking, because the conditions could dictate. Right now, in fact, we're at a, have to keep a four feet is our, is our mandate. It's not even at six feet anymore. So it, when we get down to orange tier or whatever the tiers are, and we hit that four million vaccination rate, tho- those are the conditions that I'm talking about. So I just want us to be prepared and looking ahead. You're right, we don't want to be signaling that we're switching to full in April, but we also don't want to be saying we're sticking our heads in the sand and, and, you know, forgetting the rest of the situation could improve because it just happened so fast, both going up and down, so.
I, I, I agree totally. I mean, and I guess I would just ask Julie, I would say if, if these things magically happened and it's, uh, April twentieth, and we've got a no-foot standards issue, um, can you, can, can kids start coming May first, you know, by a staff without us doing anything as a board? Can you handle it? You know, we got the teachers, we got the space. We used to, we used to have that, all those kids, we got less kids. We're opened up May first. It just happens, you know? That's my, that's the ideal, right? But, um, can staff do that, Julie? I mean, without a lot of planning and stuff, we should be able to be perfect time, because that's what we do, right?
That's what we do, Mike. So remember, I still have the, uh, emergency authorization, and I think we'd have plenty of time to call a, uh, board meeting. And also, I want to just assure the board that we monitor the COVID situation on a daily basis. Uh, we are not only having conversations about present tense, but we're also having conversations about the future and trying to anticipate, which is very challenging to do, when some of these restrictions, uh, might be lifted. And right now, the biggest barrier is that, uh, four-foot distancing. So, um, we, we have some estimated timeframes that, that, that we believe might happen. I'm certainly not going to say those because, um, it's just trying to anticipate what's happening. But we are having those conversations, and we do believe, um, that we'll be able to pivot quickly. And that's, uh, some of the reasons why the schedules that we have were developed. Um, so the answer, I believe, is yes, yes, and yes. Yes, we are monitoring. Yes, we'll be that update. Yes, I believe we can pivot quickly if things continue in the beautiful direction that, that they are going.
Wonderful.
Thanks.
What a way to end a meeting, huh?
So close. I'm so close. It's the same thing. I'm still. It's like a footnote to that. Uh, our summer school planning, our expanded, you know, four point six billion dollars from the state. Uh, we've gotta have robust plans in place and know that everyone is working on it. Are we gonna get an update on what that could look like at our next meeting?
Yes.
Awesome. Thank you.
I like all the, thank you. Well, thank you, fellow board members, colleagues, and district staff for making it a successful and long meeting. Anyway, I'm gonna finish the meeting tonight at nine, twelve.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hi, everybody.
Thank you, staff.
Keep staying safe. Get well.